Alrighty, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. 1.1, we'll start with 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. And the pledge will be led virtually by students from Dr. DeWitt Ortuno Davades and Ms. Christina Miranda Porcha's 6th grade class at Bradley Elementary School. Please stand and join us.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and and free of sin and justice for all. You may be seated.
Alrighty, job well done. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to 1.3, Approval of the Agenda.
Is that moved?
Second. It's been moved and properly second. I believe we have discussion.
Dr. Wyatt, I do have an amendment to the personnel report.
Yes, sir.
I want to amend the personnel report in this way. All decreases of hours and abolishments on page 51 through 56. I'm going to pull those for tonight as we continue the negotiations process with CSEA. Page 51 through 56.
Alright, Dr. Funches, so we're gonna pull all decreases of hours and abolishments pages 51 through 56 on the personnel report.
Correct.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda.
With the amendment.
With, as amended. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Ms. Bayos?
Alright, agenda carries with the amendment. Let's go ahead and move on to 1.4 Inspirational Message. And this week, it'll be by Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. So my inspiration, I'm gonna have some assistance with my inspiration to share some of the great things that is happening within our district. But before I do that, I do want to thank everyone for their prayers and their support. Today was a very difficult day. We had the home-going services for my mother-in-law, which is like a mother to me over 30 years. And she served this district as well. And I wanna thank the district for their resolution that they sent as well. She was about, all about education and serving and continued to serve in the community. And so, as I said, today was a very difficult day. But being surrounded with the community and family and friends and those of you that attended today, our family appreciates you and thank you for your service and your love and support. Her name is Bobby Jean Johnson, Bobby Jean Johnson. And ironically, she served, and you all know just recently Joyce Payne, who passed away, was actually the principal, her principal at the time when she was working in the district as well, who preceded her also a few weeks ago. A few weeks ago, we had her services as well. So as we said, you know, sometimes they go together and they call upon each other. And she was, again, a very well-respected woman in the community as well. And we thank God that she didn't have to suffer in any way. It just happened to be her time. And so, thank you all as we move forward. And so, as I said, our, our district has done some amazing things through some critical, critical times that we had no control over. But I'm glad as we are closing out the year, we are celebrating and we'll be doing some celebrations tonight. And we want to just give you an opportunity to share in on another celebration of the work that's being done at the Inland Career Education Center. So if you all will play the video.
Alongside many class offerings, the Inland Career Education Center offers a citizenship program. We have in-person and online classes, day and evening, to meet the needs of the students who work in different shifts and also considering their various family tasks and responsibilities. The population is diverse. We have students from Syria, United Arab Emirates, Armenia, Bangladesh, Taiwan, Pakistan, People's Republic of China, India, Vietnam, Honduras, El Salvador, and Mexico. Noteworthy to mention is the fact that many of our students are frontliners. Some work part-time and a good number work full-time in food industries, grocery stores, construction, local medical clinics, and caregivers or assisted living centers. They aspire to find family-sustaining jobs where they can actualize their expertise and accumulated experiences. Our students are contributing to the economy and well-being of our community. In the past year, we have assisted 68 students to become new US citizens. The journey was overwhelming, but we're extremely happy to be a part of their education and growth and to make a cherished dream come true. Cipriano Castaneda, Mexico. Cipriano entered the United States in 2000 at a young age. He was detained in the immigration center for eight hours and was sent back to Mexico. However, the experience didn't discourage him. He attempted to enter the country again together with his neighbors. They slipped in successfully and were able to find some kind relatives who took them under their care. He worked in construction as a laborer, lifting heavy things, housekeeping, and restructuring the streets Monday through Sunday. It was difficult, intensified by the thought that he was many miles away from his loved ones. Yet he was strengthened, knowing that here we have numerous opportunities to improve our lives. In the future, he will be able to help his siblings finish school. He studied English and citizenship preparation in night in our school. He became a citizen and hopes that someday he'll be able to provide the best education for his children and a great life for his family. Currently, aside from his job, he's working on his electrical certificate. Phirin Tien, Vietnam. Phirin was petitioned by her brother to come over to the United States. Equipped with a Bachelor of Science in Social Work, she worked as a volunteer in a local agent center that helps immigrants apply for medical insurance and tutors children. After becoming a US citizen, she was hired as a social worker in a local nonprofit organization. She also tutors some children whose mothers need to work on the weekend. This is her way of helping out families who need to earn additional income to meet their needs in this difficult time. Diana Esparsa, El Salvador. Diana dreamed of being able to provide her children with the best education and to be able to help her parents live a comfortable life. That desire prompted her and gave her the courage to cross the border and come to the United States. Although she finished an accounting program in El Salvador, she was happy to be accepted as a baker in a grocery store here in our city. Her children attended elementary school in our district and they love to go to school. She registered in GED classes and in our citizenship preparation program. Now that she's a US citizen, she plans to enroll in nursing this fall. She feels that nurses are needed most in our country and she loves helping the sick. It's a remarkable way that she feels she can give back to the country that has provided her with great opportunities for a better life. Sami Rabe, Syria. Freedom is a privilege which many take for granted, but for Sami, it's a treasure of our country that should be savored and honored. Originally from Syria, he migrated to the States with his wife. They wanted to live in a place where they can enjoy peace and harmony with their neighbors and community. Together, they have two successful children. Their oldest son is a doctor who works in a Syrian medical center. And the youngest son is a pharmacist who is employed by a pharmaceutical company in Canada. Sami is a man of character. After becoming a US citizen, Sami contracted COVID-19. He was told that he could avail himself of SSI and government-provided assistance. However, he proudly said that he'll go back to his job at a convenience store after getting better, rather than receiving money from the government. He says that he doesn't wanna be a liability, but instead wants to be a contributing member to the community. In the future, he plans to open his own convenience store. Sami is a man of integrity, a character we hope everyone will emulate.
Thank you, and my inspiration is the inspiration of others.
Alrighty, thank you, Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. That was very inspirational. I agree. We'll move on to 2.0, Special Presentations and Recognitions. 2.1, Student Leadership Advisory Council Presentation.
We're very excited, Board, to have our Student Leadership Advisory Council. They have been working very tirelessly this entire year to be able to support the programs in our various schools and being representatives. Tonight, we have a cross-section of the group giving a report on what they've done this year. And we'd like to bring Miki Chahusky to the dais. She has served as the district's lead on the, on the council. Thank you.
Hello, we're having to pinch-hit one of our, our emcee is actually not here yet. So I was trying to help them pinch-hit for her. Good evening, everybody. I'm Miki Chahusky, a longtime employee and actually a student of the school district. I'm kind of excited because this is also probably my last time at this podium in front of you because I am retiring. So some of you will be very happy to hear that. July 8, July 8 is my date because I promised one more thing to Dr. Rodriguez because, you know, what's one more thing? Thank you for having us here today. It was my honor and my pleasure to this year facilitate the District Student Leadership Advisory Council. This is a council that is made up of students from across the school district, all nine high schools. And they came together this year to work on some projects that were begun by the group last year. Before we start, I'd like to thank Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Bykandova and our secretary, Diana Zapata. It's been a rough year. We've been very short-staffed and they've really helped us a lot in trying to achieve what we wanted to achieve this year. And I would be remiss with not thanking our facilitators. Ryan Harsh, happy birthday, Ryan Harsh. He's here on his birthday. This is, he said there was no place he would rather be. Cindy Pimentel, Yousaf Yassin, Rebecca Huff, Shannon Miller, Joe Salas, Carlos Solorio, Shelley C. Bradford, Chantal Wesley, Matthew Amori, and Mark Pollitt. And many of them are here with us tonight. One of the things that I, I really wanna say about them is most of those folks are in the classroom. So they did this on top of their classroom duties. And if you've been paying any attention to what's been going on at our school sites this year, it has been a teaching year unlike any that I have seen in my 30-plus years in the district. And so, I really need to say hats off. It was really important to me to give kudos to them because they've gone on above and beyond this year to not only take care of their duties at school, but also be responsible for these students here in front of us. So what is the Student Leadership Advisory Council? The Slack has two purposes, and we love, we actually kinda love the name Slack because we actually aren't slackers, but we still, you know, we, so we kind of embrace that whole, whole thing. But the biggest thing that they do is they are here to increase student voice in decisions that affect them. We've had presentations all year from LCAP, the school calendar, the strategic plan. And we've given them the ability to give voice. And you're going to hear some about what they've done this year to do that. We've also worked to develop their leadership skills and provide them opportunities outside of the classroom to be able to be our next generation of leaders, hopefully here in our community. And so, to talk to you tonight about what we are doing and what we have done this year, we're actually going to be, is it gonna be you? Okay. It's actually gonna be Daisy Rojo who's gonna emcee the evening for you tonight. So Daisy?
Hello, my name is Daisy Rojo. I am a student at San Gregorio High School. As a student leader for the advisory council, one main thing we did was have student advisory meetings in person, also virtually in the beginning of the year due to very diverse schedules of every student leader and to lack of helpers and other students who were willing to make the time. Some opportunities in our in-person was to give ideas and to share our thoughts on our struggles and our daily lives in school, to share things we liked about school and things we wanted to change for, to see, to see like what we, we see other students to basically speak for them and to show that we, we also want something changed in our school and our daily lives. One opportunity we had this year was to go to Sacramento and speak to some councilmen, councilwoman. And it was a really great experience. I personally really liked it. And I hope next year, we may be able to bring more students so that they can see the opportunities that they have and the contacts that they can make. For our Student Leadership Advisory Council, we have, from last year, 2022 to 2021, we have four subgroups, which are Campus Pride, Community Involvement, Peer Mentoring, and Restorative Practices. Unfortunately, we had to break him into two small subgroups due to, again, lack of student involvement. So instead of peer mentoring and restorative being two groups, it's now one group because they both involved being with the students, one-on-one, helping them become a better student, better mentally, physically, and involved. And Campus Pride and Community Involvement is also together. So they help the school in general to, to make the school more, you know, like more happier, a better place for students to, to see and want to be more attached and comfortable. Campus involvement? Alright, so Campus Involvement, Community Pride, them together. It's Anthony and Emmanuel.
Hi, my name is Anthony Escobar. I'm a senior. I go to Pacific High School and this is actually my first year here. And I actually glad that I made the choice to come here. So my group is Community Pride with Emmanuel and then Ms. Miller, Ms. Miller, Ms. Huff, and Amy. And also, pretty much, our group is about campus safety, like what we can do to improve our environment or, or spread the word to other people, like, you know, like get other people's opinions of how we can change like the environment, what are things that need to be improved for safety or just like outside of school as well, like transportation and other needs that other students need. So what we did so far to spread the, you know, spread the word about our community pride, we did, we did little slides, we did posters, we did, we did slips, we did, you know, meetings and we put like little goodies. We did like goodies, we had like bags and then, yeah, so, but we had a little bit of kind of like adversity. You know, a lot of people didn't come, people had busy schedules, you know, like people didn't have computers or wifi, but we overcame it. We still were able to do what we had to do. And, you know, I'm proud of it to be in this group. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Salgado and I have a video for you guys. And let's play that real quick. Hey, everyone. We're Slack, which is the Student Leadership Advisory Council. We have put on a challenge for you all.
It's a candidates' challenge using the hashtag #CommunityForPositivity and SB Community Pride. And you will be receiving a variety of merchandise and goodies while in this challenge.
Just make sure you use our hashtag to start the trend.
Hey, are you doing okay? Don't you seem like you have your school on your day? Are you okay?
Yeah, I can take a picture.
Well, now that we're friends, let's take a picture. We can use a hashtag, SB Community Pride. Oh, you need to drop something. I'm down too.
Yeah, I'm crazy.
Thank you.
Do you need help trying your shoes?
Yes, please.
I can help. Yeah, now you should, all tied.
Thanks.
And that was our video. So as you can see, as you saw from the video, we are trying to bring in pride in all our campuses. And with doing so, we made a challenge and a hashtag. With using the hashtag #CommunityForPositivity and hashtag SB Community Pride, you'll be able to find on Instagram, Facebook, and all that, people using our hashtag, showing them how they bring pride to their schools. And SB Community Pride, actually, from my school, Arroyo Valley, you can find a post of them making stress balls just because they wanted to bring in like some community pride. Was thinking about the school, like, it's dress finals week. They're coming up. Ooh. So, so there's that. And if we move, yeah, well, with like, going back to the video, that was the first thing we did in our first in-person meeting, which was exciting, to be honest. Like, we were all ready, we were all pumped, we were excited to bring this project and show you guys and bring it to our campuses. It's actually, it was really fun working with, with the Slack members. And yeah, be sure to use our hashtag if you're ever doing something to bring pride. That's it.
Hello, my name is Christina Hadad. I'm from Restorative Practice and Peer Mentoring. And here with me is?
Hello, everyone. I'm Ladeisha Brewster. I attend San Bernardino High School.
Beautiful, okay. So, alright.
Alrighty, so if I could have the Peer Mentoring and Restorative Practices group, please stand so I can say all of you guys' names. So we have Malina, Ayana, Gabrielle, Leila, Jessica, Darlene, Fatima, Arlym, Yolanda, Christina, Nisha, Taylor, Diana, and Hunter. I believe everybody got a, a whole program package? Okay, so the printing, we don't have it right now, but you guys will get one. So I'm gonna go over mission and overview right now. The Slack Peer Mentoring Restorative Practices Committee wants to help students of San Bernardino who are struggling with their performances. Our goal is to re-engage students with behavioral or attendance issues. We want to create an environment between students that is supportive and uplifting so that students can feel motivated by their peers. We want everyone to feel involved and able to accomplish whatever it is they put their minds to. Now, next up, we're gonna have somebody else present our next slide. Thank you for your time.
Hi again. So this next slide is about Roses and Thorns, our struggles and achievements and successes we've had this year. And starting off will be our struggles. So again, due to lack of people and COVID restrictions, we had to have virtual meetings in the beginning. And again, due to our diverse schedules, everyone didn't really coordinate their time. And a lot of lack of people attending the virtual meetings was a real struggle. So. We also had the group merge and switch because of the four groups going into two instead. We, we set tiny goals halfway through the years. So we had all our members from last year being seniors moving to college or losing their SBCUSD account. So we, in order to grab some information that we had from that year, last year, 2020, 2021, we had to go into their old accounts, get the information they had from last year. And it was just a struggle because all the things that were planned that year were mainly lost and we thought we had lost all hope. But we're glad we had one senior left who had the information and were able to get back and start from the plan that was last year.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fatima Villarosa and I am currently a senior at Middle College. Now, enough with the struggles that we've been going through because, like most people, we tend to overcome them and not let them bring us down. So some of the achievements were that we came back, we're in person, yay. Although some of us are most likely joining us online, we do have a majority of us here present. So we have started creating a plan, like, like implemented a plan for next year. We also like started a, creating a budget. And we started laying down some foundation for future efforts. Basically, although we've missed some, most of our seniors that have graduated already, we do have some of our, like, a couple of seniors left, like myself. And, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I don't. So we are trying to recruit more people and we need to get, I feel like we should, and we need to get out this word about our group that we're doing because not a lot of people know about it. And I feel like this is a great opportunity for, opportunity for most kids because it, it lets them know that we want them to be a part of our group and we want them to be able to share their opinions as well. Because most people feel like they're not included and they want to be included. And I feel like if we let them know, then they'll bring us more ideas and they'll help us improve on the things that we want to be accomplished this year.
Alright, thank you. Now, we're going to introduce our leaders, Gabriel and Christina, to talk about Sacramento, our trip to Sacramento.
Hi, everyone. It's Christina again. And here with me to talk about the Sacramento trip is Gabriel and Janira.
First of all, I would like to thank every single one of you that are sitting right in front of me for giving us the opportunity to go to Sacramento. For some of us, it was the first time we ever left the inland empire or even flown on a plane. And for others, it was the first time they ever got to stay at an inn in the downtown, no, downtown Sacramento. And it was an amazing experience that if you could see on all the pictures, which I am proud to say that I took, so did Mr. Chahusky. We had so much fun and we were able to learn and communicate with a bunch of people that were part of the, the higher-ups. And to take it away, I have Janira.
Alright. Alright, so who did we meet? Well, we met Assemblyman Medina, Assemblyman Ramos, Assemblywoman Reyes. We were, we were able to bring about our concerns about homelessness, financial literacy, transportation, and safety. So, not only that, we were also able to meet Mr. Tony Thurmond, who's the State Superintendent of Instruction, Ms. Is Sterling, who's the Government Relations Manager of the California Teachers Association. So she's a lobbyist, and she was able to educate us on the jobs that we can actually get on the Capitol, or maybe we can intern. And not only that, we were actually able to meet Senator Steve Bradford on the street. All right, so what else did we do? This is my favorite part. Actually, we were able to visit the Assembly floor at the Capitol, and we were able to witness live one of the most pivotal parts of the process of bringing about change in the community, which is voting on the bills, and it's just, you know, fascinating to me as a government student. Yes, so we were able to see the Assembly people voting on the bills, or not voting on it. And we also learned about the advocacy and democracy at the California State Museum, wherein we learned a lot about the California history and farmers uniting against their employers. And we were able to build relationships and friendships at the Holiday Inn Sacramento, wherein we, as young ones, hanged out with each other, and we had so much fun. Also, at our dinner at Punishable Social, wherein we just played bowling and pool all night long and had good food, of course. And then we had lunch at Old Town Sacramento, wherein we were also able to tour the place in our own little groups.
So, for the social atmosphere, all of us got to meet and see a diverse group of students that you don't really get to see. So while we were having our Sacramento trip, we were able to meet and communicate with a bunch of different people. And it was scary at first because you have a group of students that you don't know, and you're like, ooh, am I, am I gonna be friends with them? Or like, do I gotta stay away? And then, um, while we were all communicating and having fun together, I was actually able to grow with a bunch, like, I was able to grow and communicate and build friendships with some of these students right here. I'm excited to be with them, talk to them, and actually create a bond through them because of this trip. By the end of the trip, we felt as if we known each other for like more than a couple of weeks. And that was an amazing experience because you don't get that in just one night. So I appreciate you guys for letting us have that opportunity and for allowing us to go on a trip that brought in our view of there's more to San Bernardino and there's more opportunities besides the Inland Empire. Lastly, we would also like to thank our facilitators because they're amazing, and without them, we wouldn't have been able to been supervised and all get lost at the Sacramento trip. So Ms. Chahusky, Ms., Mr. Harsh, Ms. Miller, and Mr. Pollitt, we would like to thank you guys as well for everything that you guys did for us, and have a nice day.
I just wanna add one thing. If it wasn't for these facilitators, I would have totally lost my purse. And I would have totally lost all my information needed. They had to yell at me a couple of times to like, be like, hey, get your stuff. So thank you.
So where are we going from here? Um, we're, we already have some plans. Um, we're gonna do something unique. Every year that I've been involved with the student leaders, it's been different, different facilitators, which is gonna happen again next year, in different things. But one of the things that we want to put together is a leadership team. We're gonna, and we're gonna have them put together a framework so that there is something set up for the future, so that we're not starting from zero every year. Um, this year was exceptionally tough since we started in virtual, and these, these are very involved students. So part of our problem in the first half of the year was that they all are involved in sports, or they're taking classes at Valley or clubs. And so they had a lot of competing interest for a virtual meeting after school. So everything really picked up, and we really got going in January. So we're gonna meet, this is why I'm staying till July 8th, is we're meeting July 5, 6, 7 to do summer leaders. Um, we have a leadership team, and many of these that are not seniors will be on the leadership team next year. And they'll be deciding exactly how, um, how it's gonna operate next year, how often we're gonna meet, what they're gonna do, and kind of set the agenda so that we, they can hit the ground running in August. Mr. Irvin asked us in, I don't know, February, March, I don't know, now I don't remember exactly when it was, but he asked us to talk about how we could include elementary and middle school voices. There just wasn't the time or the place to be able to do that this year. But one of the things that they will talk about this summer is what, what is it that we could do so that we could, could actually, you know, wouldn't be as involved in what, as what our high school kids are doing, but that we could involve elementary and middle school kids next year in some input sessions and, and hearing, you know, what's happening in their worlds. And then the last thing is, is that they did a strengths, weakness, opportunities, threats analysis. They'll be completing that next Monday, which is our last meeting of the year, and we'll also say goodbye to our seniors at that meeting. Um, and so they're gonna be reviewing the recommendations from this year's committee and seeing how they can implement that, with that. And as we go to our last slide, Christina?
I love how I get this last slide. Any questions? Oh, hey. Um, all right, so it says Christina's, where's your purse? I love it. Um, my purse is at home. I didn't wanna bring her because I didn't wanna lose her. Um, it says Anthony, are you hungry? Are you hungry, Anthony? Okay, okay, that's good. Um, where's Stephanie? Um, Stephanie, oh, girl, I don't know where she is at. That's a good question. They should have put where's Christina too, because I didn't know if I was gonna be able to make it. And, um, so are we late? Yeah? Are, no, we're not five minutes late?
You're a little bit late, but we appreciate the comic relief.
Yeah.
So good job, young people. Thank you for your time today. So President Wyatt, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity for, to be able to showcase the work of our student leaders. And we look forward to doing great things next year as we're building infrastructure and adding more student voice to the governance of our school district. Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome, and what a great job, great presentation by all of you. When you see all these lights on, it's usually a pretty good thing or a pretty bad thing. So in this case, I would say it's a great thing because they have a number of, I imagine, wonderful questions for you to answer. And I just wanna say thank you before they get to go, because I get to go last and they'll ask all my questions, so. Uh, we'll start, we'll start with the Vice President, Mr. Danny Tillman.
Thank you very much, President Dr. Wyatt. Great presentation. Question for you, um, how many students went on the trip to Sacramento?
We had 14 students attend.
And then out of the 14 students that are here, I mean, the students that are here today, what grades were you in? How many ninth graders do I have, any?
Um, did we have any ninth graders on the trip?
10th graders?
We, yeah, most of our field trip.
I'm looking, I'm looking. 11th graders? And how many people are seniors? So who was the one 10th or 11th grader? So we wanna make sure you come back, okay?
Yes.
Because you have some experience, you can help with the new group. I think it was great that you took the trip. The young man had talked about flying for the first time. I went from my whole time in San Bernardino and never had taken a plane trip until I got in college, so I understand that. So I know it was a great experience for you. And then you, you, I don't know if you noticed it, but a lot of people knew Ms. Chahusky, right? Do you know why?
She's very important.
Huh?
She's very important.
Why?
Oh, because she can find my purse, she said.
Because she what?
That she can find my purse. That's, that's her answer.
Ms. Chahusky used to be Secretary for the California Teachers Association, which is one of the largest unions in the state. So that's all part of the political process. I'm sure when you saw Steve Bradford on the street, he knew her personally, so probably a whole lot of folks know her. But it's good for you guys to get exposed to the political, um, uh, the political layout, the sooner the better. Just for any of you who wanna respond, what's the one thing, the biggest thing you learned by going to Sacramento? Anybody can respond.
So, one of the biggest things that I learned about going to Sacramento is that there's two. One of them is that communication can, uh, and creating connections between people can lead to so many different opportunities that you can have. With Ms. Chahusky, she was able to get us into buildings that I'm not sure if we were allowed in, but it was pretty fun. And then the second one is that you have to be a leader in order to follow through with whatever your plans or goals are. So instead of just sitting around, looking at people, and expecting change, you have to do it for yourself. You have to take action.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you, and we'll move on next to Board Member Dr. Flores.
I want to commend you all for going and also to your facilitators and Ms. Chikoski, I can never say her name, but anyway. It's real important, I think, listening to you, that you learned a lot, correct? By going and, and meeting the Assembly members and so forth, and also Superintendent Thurmond. It's, uh, these are the movers and shakers, some of them. And, uh, I just implore you to keep learning, because that's just one part of it. The other part is knowing how bills get sponsored, how they get passed, and of course you, how do you lobby? And then also how it moves up to the Appropriations Committee and all the process before it goes to the floor and of both the Senate and the Assembly. And so I just, I'm, I'm happy that you guys had that experience. It's really important in terms of preparing you for your leadership. And, uh, did, did you all learn a lot? Yeah?
Yeah, we did.
I mean, also had fun, right?
Of course.
And like Mr. Tillman said, taking your first plane ride is really, really an experience, you know? Yeah, yeah. And, um, so my question to you is, given this experience, what do you foresee, or what, how, how is it gonna impact you in your future? Maybe a couple of you can, can respond to it.
So I think how this can, um, impact me as a person is that I can see that there's actually people who actually do care. And I used to be a kid that think like no one cares about kids at school, but as I come and see all the people who are fighting for us to make better change and opportunities, I see now that, you know, there's people who do care, and I can be one of those who help and, you know, get my voice and ideas out.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
One more person. Go ahead.
One more.
I also, like.
You're the 11th grader, right?
10th grader.
Oh, 10th grader, yes.
Yeah, so like, kind of partaking into that, I, I felt like the first time, like, I felt like I, I as well could like speak and talk about something like I would like in my school or in other people's school, or even my children's school. Like, I would like them to learn. So one thing I spoke about was financial literacy classes. And I just found out today a picture that we've, Ms. Mickey found online was the Bill Text AB 2215 or 2215, uh, said, "The bill would encourage local education, educational agencies to provide all pupils in grades nine to 12, inclusive the opportunity to access the financial education standards." I really want to share that, so thank you.
Tell me, what's your name?
Daisy Rojo.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Rosas Medina?
First of all, I just wanna say congratulations to everyone. Um, the fact that you're coming in and speaking to the board. I remember even as a parent, I was nervous, so please don't feel like you did poorly. You did all amazing. I know that my first time speaking to the board, it was really nerve-wracking. And the fact that you have great leaders within the program, and I mean, those that are participating in the Ms. Chikoki, she, she Choki? No, no.
Chahusky.
Chahusky. I know, Chahusky. Um, Mr. Harsh, I know, and I, and I thought I had it. Ms. Miller, and then Ms. Pollitt. I honestly believe that your leadership in helping our students is what's gonna help us move forward with these programs. And I'm sorry to see that you're gonna be leaving, but I know that you are, are leaving with good hands with others that are gonna be pushing this forward and making sure that, that we continue the good work and we have more exposure for our students going up to Sacramento. And it's not just the plane ride, it's also understanding how legislation works, how it impacts the state, how it impacts us locally here as well. And, uh, you know, and it seems like you're all a good family, a family knit, and you were able to build these relationships that may last a long time, so I wanna say congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. We'll move on now to Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Thank you, and wonderful presentation, and koodles to you all for a great job. Just a couple of questions. My first question is, I think, did you say it's all high schools as of right now that are represented, correct?
Correct. We have a lot of students from different high schools, um, who get to attend these meetings.
And how do you go about enrolling the students?
Um, that part, I would say needs a little bit of change, but currently what happens and how I was enrolled into this, you get kind of selected by your principal, and from there, you kind of just talk to the teachers who are facilitators in this and who help you come to these meetings and inform you what's happening. I do kind of wish in the future, and I did bring this up to them, that there is more of a variety of students who get to attend. Not a lot of students know about this opportunity, not a lot of students know that they can be advocating for their school, for their environment in general. And so I hope in the future that that gets a little change.
Excellent. So that means the promotion as well, so there's no formal promotion?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And then, um, my other question was in reference to, I think at the beginning of the presentation, that you kind of spelled out a couple of concerns that you guys had. Were you able to accomplish any of those? And we know that COVID's been a challenge in virtual, and I loved how you guys shifted and said, okay, so enough of that. But did you get a chance to accomplish any of the particular things that you brought as students?
I do know that, um, the people presenting from Anthony's group, they did have a lot of improvement. As I was in their group in the beginning, I was there when it started, and I got to see a lot of their improvement. They got to put out posters, they got to recognize a lot of students, they got to put their hashtag out, so it was a lot of improvement in that group. Um, Restorative Practice, I do know when I came into this group, it kind of had a rocky start, but these students did have a lot of improvement. We have a lot of more student activity in that group, and so hopefully next year, they have more of a big jump in this group. And I just hope more in the future that this just has more of an improvement, like I said before. But there was a lot of, um, there was a lot of improvement. They do have a lot of stuff that they need to start, they're in do, but the Restorative Practice group, they're doing amazing.
Thank you, and in any way we can support, because that's what we're here to do. But last thing I wanna say to Daisy, since I think Daisy is the 10th grader, we definitely look forward to you continually pushing that voice of financial literacy. I know of a number of your other schools are doing that, and that's our partners that we're working with, ThinkWise, doing Abida Reality. And I know they went and actually spoke down in Sacramento. I don't know if it was the same time you all were there. So continue to push that because we do know that that's very important. We want you all to be strengthened in your financial literacy before you hit your college or your next step in life. You wanna know, so I'm glad to hear that you all want to know and don't want to have ruined credit before it's too late. So thank you all. Wonderful job.
If I may, Daisy, Gabriel, Hunter, and Ladeisha will all be on the leadership team, and will be attending summer leaders this summer.
Congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. We'll move on now to Ms. Sabios.
I'll try to be brief here, but, um, congratulations. I do commend each and every one of you, from the students to the teachers, that, you know, it, it's a commitment, and especially this year, like, it has already been mentioned, you know, it's been extremely difficult. So I do wanna commend you, and I do have a couple of questions. How many did you say attended the trip?
14 students.
Okay, and the Slack, is it, how many members do you have? Like, how does it work?
Um, from each school, there should be about five to seven students attending, but as this year became rocky, not a lot of students were able to speak out, so we currently have 35 students attending these meetings.
Okay, so, um, membership is about five students per high school?
Yes, per high school.
Okay, okay, awesome. And then what is, um, what would you say is like one of the main differences or distinctions between Slack and like, say, like an ASB program?
Well, I feel like as of being part of ASB before, most of your voice just goes for your students in the school. So your activities, your prom, your, um, just small activities for the seniors, for the students, incoming freshmen. students, incoming freshmen, all this stuff. Well, with SLAC, you kind of speak out on what you see in your school, how they can improve, when you don't really have that voice in your school. It's more of the teachers and the staff that really have that voice and what happens. So with SLAC, you kind of have the opportunity to see like what you can as a student say to improve this school, how your experience has been these past five, six, seven, however years you've been attending in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. So you kind of have that voice in saying, you know, I've seen this, what's happening these past couple of years, I know that this can be improved because this district is amazing, and there is a lot of stuff that they have done for us and I really appreciate, but you know, I do think we need a little push in this direction, and yeah.
Thank you so much for that thorough response. And just to kind of piggyback off of, you know, some of the comments by my colleagues here, definitely, definitely get involved, right? And some would even say that, you know, local politics are even more important in many ways, because the decisions that directly affect you every single day are made here. So I invite you and encourage you all, as you're going through this process and learning more about, you know, getting involved and things like that, to come and attend these board meetings. You know, hopefully, we, sometimes it could get a little long, right? And I know you guys got to go to school the next day, it's usually on Tuesdays, but right now they're being held virtually, so that's a plus. You can also make public comments virtually, so I really, really encourage you to come and visit us a little bit more often, and listen to kind of what's going on, so that you can be part of the conversation, because again, the decisions that we make here are going to directly affect you all. And again, also to City Council and other meetings. But anyway, aside from that, really, really proud of you guys, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. I see Dr. Flores turn her light back on.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mrs. Applegate, do we have financial literacy offered as an elective throughout our high school, at all our high schools?
No.
We are actually working with Dr. Venkatesan to do that, so that we have some options available for our students, because it was brought to our attention through them, that that is something that they would really like to have.
So we don't have them currently?
So we don't have them currently, but we are working on getting them.
But we're working on it, and when will they be implemented?
Hopefully by the fall, but we'll see with the timeline will be. I can bring that back to you.
So Daisy, you just saw me making sure, okay, I'm sorry, to make sure that they do it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and I'll just, I'll end with asking Ms. Applegate, do we have any partnerships with financial literacy with any of our local credit unions? Because I know I partner with ThinkWise with my programs, so I'm thinking, is that somebody that we have a partnership with already?
We have a partnership with them, now we need to explore getting it into the curriculum.
All right, fantastic, fantastic. And again, to our students, amazing job, amazing job presenting. Absolutely, let's give them a huge round of applause. I will say this much, I still get nervous sometimes talking in front of a crowd, and you know, recently we honored our employees, had our Employee Appreciation Day, and this room was absolutely packed, and I'm sure we violated fire code that day, but it was just kind of, I was like, wow, usually I come to board meetings, I'm fine, but that night I was a little bit nervous, so, you know. But I also want to talk about the cycle of leadership. And we talk about the cycle of leadership, I heard some of my colleagues, you know, commend our staff for doing such an amazing job with our students, and that's part of the cycle of leadership in regards to when we develop our future leaders, and we call this the Session Plan sometimes. So you are our future, Ms. Sabios kind of led to that a little bit as well by coming to these meetings and presenting. Just so you know, I've never been to the Capitol Building, still. I hope to one of these days, so I think what a great experience that is, right? But again, I want to emphasize that you are our future, and we plan on passing the torch on to you guys, right? So some of you may be sitting up here, or up at the State Capitol, or who knows, maybe even higher than that, so great job again, thank you.
Is that all the questions?
I think so. I'd better say yes before another light goes on, so, but no, thank you so much, we appreciate it again. Alrighty, we will move on to 2.2. Oh boy, okay, we want to give them another applause, sure, sure. And Ryan, happy birthday, by the way, Mr. Harsh, and since I'm saying that right now, we'll also say happy birthday to Vice President Danny Tillman. You guys share something in common today, so, a birthday. We're moving on to 2.2, Resolution and Recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and that will be Vice President Danny Tillman.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Whereas the month of June is recognized as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has made and continues to make vital contributions to the United States and to the world in every aspect, including in the fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, architecture, fashion, sports, government, music, film, politics, technology, literature, and civil rights, and whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District advocates and promotes the safe, inclusive, and respectful treatment of all students, and whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are at increased risk of mental health issues, suicide, homelessness, becoming victims of bullying and violence, and have significantly higher rates of school dropout, academic failure, and school disengagement, and whereas there is a need to focus on efforts that support LGBTQIA+ youth, including student and school resources that focus on positive behavioral interventions and support, resources on school climate that address bullying and parent engagement, as well as tools for student health and wellness, and whereas San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to ensuring that every student, regardless of their sexual orientation, biological sex characteristics, gender identity, or gender expression, receives a well-rounded education that meets all their academic, social, and emotional needs. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District proclaims June 2022 LGBTQIA+ Pride Month to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish safe environments in schools and communities, and encourages district staff to support lessons, activities, and conversations that engage students in meaningful learning about our LGBTQIA+ students and families, so moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the resolution.
Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Alrighty, resolution carries. Thank you, Vice President Tillman. We'll move on to 3.0, Public Comments. 3.1, Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided, no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Our first public comment will be Tanya Rhodes Hensley, welcome.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Board, Superintendent, and Cabinet. I wanted to come tonight, and I wanted to talk about what's in the back of the room. So if everybody looks at the headdress back there and knows, many of you were there, that Dr. Rogers wore it to represent Dr. Margaret Hill as one of our hometown heroes this year. And there's a really important relationship between Assistance League and our district. So with that being said, if you look at the headdress in the back, it was created by an art teacher and art students from San Bernardino High School, and it's one of those things where not only do we serve the students in our district through dental services and clothing, we also incorporate them into the event through dancing, working with them on soft skills, working with them on applied learning, which you can see in the back of the room, and so on. So many, many of our students from multiple schools were involved in the whole process of creating, from creating headdresses to being dancers, to serving that day as far as to the public. Many of you were there, I'm looking at all of these faces that I saw that day, right? As the ball chair this year, I was fortunate and very thankful for the help and support that all of you brought forward. So I just want to come and say thank you, talk about that relationship and how important it is to our community, to our schools. Assistance League has been in existence for about 70 years, and this was the 60th Signature Headdress Ball. So it's an event that doesn't happen a lot in town as far as the caliber of it. I know we have Making Hope Happen, I know we have Santa Claus, but the black tie, the formal, and that opportunity for our students to really network and mingle with people in the community. So I just want to say thank you for all of your support, and I hope it continues in the future.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hensley, and I would just say it was an absolutely amazing event, great to get together and see everyone, and definitely to honor our hometown heroes as well.
Thank you.
And Dr. Margaret Hill, of course, by Dr. Gwen Dottie Rogers, that was, you know, quite an honor as well, so, but to also see our hometown heroes, I know it choked me up a lot that evening, but what a great celebration it was, and a great celebration in our city of San Bernardino. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, our next public comment is Carrie Gilbreth, welcome.
All right, the rule is five or more, 30 minutes only, just kidding. I'm playing with you, I see some fast people over there, so I think this one's going to move just right along. Welcome.
Thank you. As you all meet someone in a second here. Rich is, or Mr. Embryani is handing out a handout to you. We thought we would not do a PowerPoint, sometimes it's fun to have a little something different, so you got that in your hot little hands right now. So, good evening, thank you for having us here today. I'm Carrie Gilbreth, I'm an alumni, I know a lot of you, so thank you for having me back. Again, alumni of Cajon, parent of two kids, one that is still at Cajon, and one who's a college junior, and a member of the Athletic Strategic Planning Committee. I want to thank Dr. Rodriguez and Mr. Buckner for your continued leadership after Dr. Volkmer retired, because we continue to do some great things. On behalf of the Athletic Strategic Planning Committee, I'm here with the athletic directors. Oh, we got hands. At all levels, to share with you what your investment has accomplished for our students in San Bernardino. Even more important, I'm here with Markell Wooten from Indian Springs High School, and Seth Johnson from Cajon High School, two stellar student athletes from Indian Springs and Cajon who will be on their way to play at the college level next year, so that's pretty outstanding. But they're just two of the thousands of great athletes in our school district at every level. Six years ago, you identified the important connection between athletics and academics, and how that breeds student success. Your belief was so strong, you made athletics a ninth pillar in your strategic plan. You recognize the premier athletic talent that we have here in our community, and you recognize the need to keep our athletes here, which was huge. You recognize that athletes bring higher GPAs, better attendance rates, better retention rates for our students, and you recognize that investing in athletics could and would be a huge driver in changing the perception and image of our city. And so here we are, six years later, and we're all here. All of us. To say thank you. You were right about investing in athletics, and we're proud to be here to say we're just getting started. So what have six years brought our athletic programs? It has brought us, thanks to you, world-class facilities with new fields, new equipment, new uniforms, hats off to athletics. Not only did our teams get new uniforms, they spanned a band and choir, I think mock trial as well, so pretty outstanding across the board, new equipment for so many sports, the addition of athletic trainers at all high schools, the resurgence of middle school intramural sports, and the launch of running clubs at elementary schools, which are now 5,000 kids strong. And, we could probably keep going and going, but yeah, I think you all could even add something each to this, but these outputs, these very important investments that you've made, have spurred nothing short of incredible outcomes. And as we all know, it's the outcomes, not the outputs that count. And you, this Board of Education, has made these outcomes possible. And what a difference it's made in just six years, our district has produced, and I'm proud to have these two gentlemen with me as part of this, two national champions, two state champions, five CIF champions, 100-plus league champions, three football All-Americans, 10-plus middle school champions, that's every year, and as we mentioned, 5,000 elementary runners, multiple college athletes that are competing today, and four Ken Hubbs Award winners, including last night's Ken Hubbs Award, going to Seth Johnson right here, and host, that deserves it! And for the first time, the Ken Hubbs Award was hosted in San Bernardino at Indian Springs. So talk about the best of the best of the best in our city. But outcomes go beyond winning. Something we all admire about you as a board is that you walk the walk when it comes to equity. You do that with academics, you do that with extracurricular activities, and you do that with athletics. You work to ensure all our students at every school have equal opportunity and access to the best. Our promise to you as a committee, and the A.D.s that are here, and our leadership that's involved, is that we will work every day to ensure and make sure our students have every opportunity so we can be highly competitive with, I'll say better than, but competitive with other districts. And we know that we'll come with potential humble asks from the board for items that could include things like new lighting, because the state's making a start later, but you know, thank you for pushing that waiver, we get one more year. CIF's new rules with pool touchpads, expanding running clubs so all our elementary kids have the opportunity to participate, and providing transportation to our middle schoolers so they can travel to play each other freely versus having to forfeit because there weren't enough parents, it could be carpooling. But in spite of the needs and more importantly, the opportunities that come, you and we will always make sure our students have the best coaching, the best support systems, all to ensure we're doing everything we can to encourage their success on and off the field. And speaking about the best coaching and support systems, 1987, I am dating myself, 7th grade, Golden Valley Middle School, for me, 8th grade, for my husband at Serrano Middle School. And at both of those schools...
Time.
There are 15 minutes for all of us? Okay. And at both of those schools, the middle school sports dynasties, and I don't use that word lightly, began. C.R. Tatlock at Golden Valley, his sister Joanne at Serrano, and for the next 35 years, they alongside Jim McGary and so many others, set the mold for what middle school sports throughout the state should be. I will still challenge anyone to find a better pep rally or bigger turnout for a basketball game. My apologies to the high school ladies over there for that, but they were good, and they were good in that middle school. But as we count down the days to their retirement, I'm hoping we can all take pause and thank them. Their impact is legendary, including the impact they made on my own two kids. Their legacy is forever. is forever. Mr. Tetlock, Coach Tetlock, we are indebted, and I think my son said it best. When I grow up, I want to be them. And it makes a mom's heart pretty huge when you see that he's on his way to doing just that. But Cameron is just one example of a San Bernardino student athlete that has benefited so hugely, not just in academics, but in life, from our athletic programs. There are thousands. And I come back to these two smart, character-strong student athletes from Indian Springs and Cajon. Markell and Seth are what every student athlete can be here in San Bernardino, and students that we are so proud to call ours. And join me in saying how proud we are as Markell heads to Whittier College to play football, and Seth heads to Berkeley to run track, both carrying the honor as San Bernardino City Unified Alums. Markell, come on up. Now you get the good speakers of it.
Good evening, y'all. I just want to say, thank you, Board. It's been a pleasure to be here tonight, and I was honored. I got the notification, what, 45 minutes before it started, so I just got to come here. But my name is Markell Wooten. I am a senior at Indian Springs High School. I'm proud to say I'm the ASB president, the senior advocate, the avid tutor, it's a long list, a football leader, a two-time league champ, all CIF player, and of course, a Whittier linebacker commit. And this fall, I'll be studying over there for business administration. So I want to thank you for the incredible facilities at Indian Springs. They make us just feel proud and welcome to other schools, because they come in to compete, and then they see our fields, they go to our locker rooms, and they just see the huge upgrades that we have that they don't have. And so the facilities makes us feel like we can achieve anything mentally and physically. We can start with mentally. Mentally, on the field, in the classrooms, they, they push us to be better since we're student athletes, or yes, student athletes, right? So they have a higher expectation for us. So that means in classrooms, we're, we're expected to meet that standard, that expectation, where they're student athletes, so they should put us to where, higher than other students. So if we miss a assignment, they puts us to where, hey, you're a student athlete, you're competing this week, you should get this done in order for you to stay mentally strong for, you know, your game. And physically, we recently had got new equipment for our weight room, which I'm sad to say that, y'all guys wanted to add it when I'm leaving, kind of heard about that, but it's all right. No, I'm coming back during the summer to wait lift. So physically, the weight room can improve a lot more things. Get a little flash, but still my freshman year, I was a little chubby little kid, you feel me? So coming into the athletic program, it helped me length out a little bit, use my strength physically and mentally to grow more, and just become the student athlete I am today. So I just want to say thank you again for that. I really appreciate it, because I learned a lot mentally and physically. Like I said again, like with me, my saying it's all mental, because if I can do it mentally, I can do it physically, and I can, you know, achieve. And that's what I learned from athletics, not only from football, but also from track. I'm a track and field thrower, so I do discus and shot put, and so I've been with the team for three years, two times MVP, not MVP, my body league champion. And so I made it to finals, league finals, unfortunately I fell short, but again, it's all a learning opportunity for me to grow and advance more. So as a student, as a student athlete, I learned how to be more prepared, be more organized, to how to lead importantly. So I originally joined ASB my last year's, my junior, no, my freshman sophomore year. Yeah, and so keep in mind, I had no leadership experience. I didn't know anything about how to lead, how to guide, how to do any of that. And keep in mind, I'm still playing football, but I'm not frost soft level, you know, coach, go get water, or just go walk around the track. They really don't pay attention to me. And so junior year, came in, hit the weight room, you know, hit the field, got mentally stronger, positively stronger, and just like that, I became up, going up, going up, going up, going up. So I became, I became an athlete, became a dog. And not only that, but also my academics. I finished the year of my junior, all A's, one B. This year, I'm going on strong right now. Thank you. This year, I'm going on strong with, I have all A's and two Bs, excuse me, I'm sorry. So ceramics is not my thing. I'm trying my best, you know. So yeah, so I became more organized. Before I was in sports, I never was an organized type of person. Before I was even an avid, I wanted to leave avid so many times because I just wasn't organized dude. And football helped me stay organized, helped me how to separate what's not important to what's important, how to compartmentalize, I'm trying to say compartmentalize, things that, that makes me better and things that don't make me better. So I took away a lot of things out of my life that wasn't important to me, and just because I wanted to be an athlete. So hanging around the guys who, you know, do things that's not supposed to, separating myself, my whole junior year, I've been working out, going, I went to the field a couple of times, run a few laps, do football drills, I stuff myself, just so mentally, I knew I wanted to be better, and I wanted to grow more. And so I just want to say that my standout moment, of course, I'm going to sit down there, was my first full season on the field, we went to CIF for the first time in school history. So I'd never been down at my school up until this year with a new head coach. I want to say thank you for the opportunity, because that field time, being on the field, the new field, helped me just get a grip of what it's like to be a football player. You know, before that, we had dirt fields, and it's kind of hard to step on that. I twisted my ankle a couple of times on there, and I wasn't able to play. But the new turf helped me, you know, run better, fast better, and it gave me motivation, like, I'm out of school with a new field, I want to play like I'm new, I'm a new person. So it got me a scholarship that I have right now. I have multiple offers. I chose to go to Whittier, because being a student athlete, you have to realize that you're a student first. And so I wanted to go to school with the best education, so I decided to go to Whittier for the business program. And without that, without me even being an athlete, I want to thank you guys forever, because you guys really mean a lot to me, and this program just helped me grow to the man I am right now. So I'm saying thank you.
Hello, all. It's a pleasure to be here before all of you, Board, tonight, and thank you so much for having me. My name is Seth Johnson, and I am a senior at Cajon High School. My thing is track and field. I've been running it all four years at Cajon, and I've been fortunate enough to represent both my city and my school at a national level two times in the past years. I, first off, just want to say thank you all for your investment, for bettering our track and field program, and really, all the programs at our school. It helps, that investment helps us buy new equipment, such as hurdles and blocks, like obviously for the hurdle events, and long jump boards, pit covers, high jump mats, standards, and bars. And that is paramount to success in track and field, because there's so many facets in the events. All that equipment has allowed my team and I to progress farther than any other Cajon high school track and field team in existence, ever. And we, this year, set a school record in the 4x4, thanks to those facilities, and, thank you. We're CIF Southern Section D1 winners in the 4x1, and have like the ninth fastest time in the state right now. I'm also the high jump state lead, and third overall in the hurdles. And I can attest to, back in freshman year, we didn't even have a track and, track. It was just dirt, and they were going over it and making it all-weather. So moving from freshman to sophomore year, we kind of just trained on the soccer fields and the baseball fields across campus, and that's where all my speed work and endurance was built. But it's a real game changer to have an all-weather track, and to be able to run on something rubber, and it's responsive, thanks to your investments. This year, undoubtedly, has been a huge year for my team and I. Going back to last year as well, I was fortunate enough to compete at a national level in Eugene, Oregon, at the historic Hayward Field. I did really well, and a memory that stands out to me is representing my city. The announcer was talking about two other athletes who were projected to do really well, and he said Seth Johnson from San Bernardino takes it. And that was just a moment of pride to represent my school and city mostly at a national level. In this past, or a couple months back, I went to New York to compete at the Nike Indoor Outdoor National, sorry, Indoor Nationals, and was fortunate enough to win it in the pentathlon, setting a facility record. And again, couldn't have been done without the facilities that your investment has brought to my school. I just want to close by saying, please keep believing and investing in our facility and equipment, and I'm sure we're going to continue to make you guys proud. And please keep our track, tennis, and softball teams in your hearts as we can continue on to CIF, Masters, and the state level. Go San Bernardino.
Alrighty. Thank you for that presentation, and as you heard me say earlier, we have some lights on already, so I'm sure that's not all of them. But we'll go ahead and start with Vice President, Mr. Tillman.
First, I want to say congratulations to the students. You're amazing. Let's give them a round of applause. And for 45 minutes' notice, that's pretty amazing. You got talent. So you've got a whole bunch of options in terms of being able to public speaking and that type of thing also. But I really want to remind the Board and the district, you know, this is a long time in the making. I can remember 10, 15 years ago, when Board members wanted to have new fields and new tracks, and we had to fight against the finance people and the facilities people who didn't want it. And we even put regular grass and dirt on the tracks. Again, as you know, Imbriani, we wanted to have the artificial turf. But anyway, it's been proven that we did the right thing by fighting for it and getting the facilities upgraded. And then I want to say to the parents also that, you know, it was about six years ago that local control funding coincided with Jaden Daniels and his mom, Regina Jackson. And she came, Jaden had started playing at Cajon High School, and she called and complained to me about not having the right type of equipment and even uniforms. And I told her, but come to the board meeting, you know, don't just tell me, come talk about it. And I didn't know, but she brought the practice jerseys, and they had holes all in them. And that was enough to give, for the board to galvanize and say, hey, we're going to change this. And we did the investments. And what we didn't know is, if we did the investments, that you actually keep your talent. Our district for years were losing talent because we didn't have facilities where the students, once they began to perform, would get stripped away from local, other, other school districts because they had the facilities and made the investments. So it's just been a perfect storm for us, aligning with local control funding, and also the advocacy from the parents, athletic directors, coaches, and just the community in general. So I think it's been great. I do want to say, because I have all the athletic directors in here, that we also want to make sure we continue allowing the community to use our facilities. You know, I always had to fight the battle for, it's ironic, for the junior, for the Pop Warner teams, and to use the fields. And Jaden Daniels ended up being one of the great players at Cajon, but he got his start from using the fields as a Pop Warner athlete at eight, nine years old. So we have to see the connection, to realize that it benefits everybody in the end. But I, I agree, we should bring the running programs back. I remember being at Roosevelt when I was at school, and we had Mr. Ruderman, and we used to run from Roosevelt to Parkside and back. And those habits that you learn at a young age benefits you. I walk and run to this day because of the exposure I had as a young kid in this district. So I, I know the difference that it makes, and I think the testament are to the student athletes. But you, you, you all know, you represent a whole bunch of other athletes that aren't here tonight that are succeeding in our district. So I think we're doing the right thing, and we should continue doing it. And I thank you all for coming out tonight. I've talked to Mr. Solins, because we do have some one-time money, and I hope that we're looking at continuing to invest, because it never ends. The toughest thing about being on the school board and being an employee of the district is you can never say we're done. We always have new students, and we always have new things that we have to accomplish. So again, I look forward to us continuing to work together, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Move on to Dr. Barbara Flores.
First of all, I'd like to commend our athletes, Markell and Seth, for your accomplishments. You are exemplary of what this board invested in, and like Mr. Tillman said, you represent many other athletes. I also want to take this time to thank Mr. Tillman for the historic moment when he dared to challenge the board to invest 1.5 million in our athletic, you know, programs. I also want to commend our athletic directors, who we challenged to come up with budgets, budgets and a plan. I believe, was it a three-year plan or a five-year plan? I don't remember. Do you guys remember? Five, a five-year plan. And they mapped it out, they went ahead and budgeted it, and said, this is what we need. And we said, if you need more money, tell us. Because now we have a lot of money that we can invest. And we wanted world-class fields, world-class fields. We didn't want our kids to pay for their uniforms. We wanted world-class uniforms, cleats, whatever, equipment, and this is the result. We have CF, I mean, all the conference sprints that you named were incredible. We also thank the parents who came and told us, look, you know, is this who we are? Is this who we want to be? No. We want to be world-class, and we're moving in that direction. So we probably need another five-year plan. And is this it? This is it? Okay, this is the five-year plan. And, pardon me?
Five-year plan's coming.
Oh, five-years plan's coming, okay.
It's in process.
Because that's what you need. You need a strategic plan. And this board has always invested in our kids. I mean, in our, in our, in our coaches, in our teachers. We believe in you, and we know you need that support. And I just am so proud, I'm so proud of both of you, and our athletic directors, our coaches. Could you all please stand again so we can recognize you? All the athletic coaches and athletic directors. And I just want to end with what you said, Markell, that it supported you in your mental, right, and physical wellbeing, and also your academics. Because, and let me tell you, you're a great speaker, both of you. You both are just incredible speakers, aren't they? And also leaders. And so we look forward to you giving back, and, and, you know, moving it forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Abigail Rosales-Madina.
I just wanted to say, I was in high school, and I didn't go as far as many of you did, but I went to the CIF for the, for, the, for, it was a 400-100, I'm trying to remember, it was a long time ago. But it was exciting, because the fact that, I know, we didn't run as fast as everybody else, but the fact that we got there was amazing. So I want to say congratulations to you both, and the different areas that you were involved in sports. It really is a way, and I, I'm, the thing is that since this is televised, I get people that are messaging me, oh, we know who they are, we know the work that they're doing. And I just want to say congratulations again to you both for, for doing what's, just showing those that are around the city and in the city that we can accomplish great things. And I also want to mention Ms. Cooper, because I know back in the day, you mentioned to me regarding the parent, the, the sports fields, the, the football fields, and it wasn't necessarily up to par where we needed it to be. And I think there was a few other folks that were starting that conversation. We brought it back to Harold, who was the Assistant Superintendent, former Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, then became the Deputy Superintendent. He started that strategic plan in order to try to create this, and I think this is a great way for us to really support and bring pride to our city, to our district, and to our schools, and for our students. And I, I do want to mention Imbriani, because, or maybe I'm saying it wrong, but I know Brooke, and so my, my partner, who's Angie, who went to Cajon High School, and said that your dad, you're coming from a generational piece of, of coaches too, right? And so, three coaches? Yes, and so, yeah, yes. And so they, they mentioned to me that, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're also growing within our own city, and making sure that they come back. So I wanted to just say thank you as well. And to all the coaches that are here, I know Mr. Tetlock, who I had my children at Richardson Prep High, so thank you so much for all of the work that you are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales-Madina. Ms. Wells?
So I won't basically restate everything that's already been said. I just want to say congratulations to the both of you. Congratulations, obviously, to the, to the coaches and every staff member that, parents that go, that are behind supporting you, but most importantly, to the two of you, because, you know, it's your sweat, right, that's going in. It's your dedication, it's your passion. So really, really, congratulations. And again, this does show the importance of having, you know, And again, this does show the importance of having, you know, great athletics department. I think that that's really important. Not everybody can be an athlete though. So it is also important to have other programs in the district for those students that, you know, I would never be able to be a runner or, you know, any of those. So there has to be some space for others to thrive as well, but congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you. And lastly, I just want to commend again the young men. You spoke so well, you spoke so eloquently. And it's important that not only your passion of the athletic, athletic abilities that you have, tongue twister, but it shows also in your academics. And that's, to me, when you can balance that out, that is going to take you wherever you need to go. And we all have benefited through this program with relatives that are, that turned pro. But the main thing, when I always talk to my nephews, I always ask them the question, school, how are we doing? And they, not one have stopped. They continue to make sure that was priority even when they were offered all these, you know, accolades. So continue to do what you're doing and we're so very, very proud of you and you make us look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. And I'll try to be a little bit of a stickler here, I didn't do a very good job at it. But let's do a special presentation next time because when we do it during public comment, we have a lot of folks waiting. And it's like impossible for this board not to engage with students, let me just say that. But no, just thank you again for your amazing job and all the hard work you put in, both academically and athletically. I say it all the time up here, athletics saved my life. It really did. You know, I came from a pretty tough background with my family. And when you don't have anybody, your, you know, your colleagues that are playing with you out there, they become your brothers and your sisters and your family. And that's the strong bond that, you know, very few things in this world can ever establish. And those are bonds that carry on with you a lifetime. It really does. And, you know, I see guys, even now, forty years later, we call each other by our last names and our nicknames. It's pretty cool though. But competition drives us in life as well. I hate to say it, but life is very difficult out there, it's very competitive. So I like when the kids have that fighting spirit, that attitude of never giving up and doing the best job you can every time you go out there on the field. The same thing with work. So keep up that hard work. Thank you to our coaches out there, great job. Thank you to our staff. And I'll say this, we're just getting started. We have a long way to go in regards to world-class facilities. I know Coach Abriani and all of them, they always get me worked up when we say world-class facilities. And I told Dr. Volkamr that too. I said, you know, my definition of world-class is pretty high. So let's keep it going. And I know this board will support us moving forward. And I hope our community does as well when it's time to step up. So thank you again.
All right, carrying on with public comments, Mr. Culberson, come on up. Thank you for being patient. I know you don't need a mic, so go right ahead.
Yeah, I don't need a mic. From Ray Culberson, I got a voice. But I want to thank the athletic directors before they leave because we were there when they first started. All those hundreds of athletic meetings that we would have every month. And we'd be talking about facilities and they'd be driving me crazy. I had no power, no money, no nothing, but I was trying to figure out strategic strategies. So they did a good job. And the other thing I want to say is that we did the athletic banquet every, every year. And so I'd like to see that thing come back because that's, that's actually a good thing and we pioneered those things. So I'll go ahead and get through with the public comments. And I'll just say this, is that this is, I want to announce my candidacy for San Bernardino City Board. And if you believe that, then you believe that chickens fly. I'm just joking. I have to start out with a joke. All right, but what I want to say is this, in twenty, in 2012, in 2012, I went with, I don't know if you guys remember Frank Stallworth. Frank Stallworth took me to go see Josie Gonzalez and we talked about creating a business school. And so we walked around and so I'd start planting the seed all over the place and trying to get these schools started because it's the next iteration in what you have to do for our community. They have to be able to sustain themselves and they have to be able to grow and learn business and the like. So we pushed this idea and we found individuals that can maneuver. And guess what? It's four years later, Entrepreneur High School will have its first graduating class coming up. And that's thanks to the, the board for approving it. Thanks for the board for support, the people who came early on, who walked through the facilities and did those things. So now we have this four-year opportunity and we have 161 graduates going through that understand the nature of business and understand the nature of marketing and understand that fundamental thing. We have our second school that's going to be built, well, it's open now, but the new building is being built in Fontana from ground up on Sierra and Miller. In three, in four years, we were able to open up two schools in the Highland and then one in Fontana. And then we're moving forward. But the most important thing that I want to make sure everybody understands is that when you get to a goal and you're able to do that independently and find a way creatively to do it, you got to take a lot. You got to take a lot of hits. And it all starts in San Bernardino. I think I was most targeted, suspensions target, attendance target. Every place you look, target, expulsions target, principals meeting off campus. Let's get Ray Culberson because he is telling us, we can't expel kids. Due process, finding a clever little way to do it and work with people and all of that. I never cared one iota about the targets, never. The only thing I cared about was I was going to survive for the kids. And if I didn't, then I was going to go out swinging and do what I had to do. Because in the end, we got to achieve goals. And we got to achieve goals for kids. And we got to achieve goals like for the greater part of the community. When we were out there on the streets and it was gangs and everything else and I was out there at three o'clock in the morning, people say, you're crazy. I was like, no, I'm absolutely crazy. I'll go out there at any given time, fight any battle that I had to for kids because people did it for us. When it comes time to move forward, we as a group, especially us as community members, we have to come together and remember that people are always watching us. And no matter what happens, I was amazed, one time I was at State of Brothers and I'm talking and there was a major gangster, Latino gangster, and he's, he had the newspaper reading about the school district, reading about the politics because people understand that. And the reason why I say that is that we don't, if we don't find a way to unite and bring ourselves together in one common cause, then we won't be able to create the Entrepreneur High Schools. We won't be able to inspire people. And I'm always looking at Sandra, when I used to go buck her at San Bernardino High School, why don't you do something with business in your curriculum? Why don't you do this? And when she creates something new or dynamic, or when you're trying to push other people to their greatest lengths, you have to go through and you have to really just press and not care about yourself. Not care about yourself, care about the other person, care about the dreams of the other person. And so when you, when you face that, all the targets and tasks that all of us like face, we know in the end, the only thing that matters is how much did we help the kids? There's nobody that can say that no matter what happened, I never was vindictive towards any person. I never targeted any person. I always just found a way to maneuver around them, let the energy come my way. And guess what? I still love everybody. Because the game is, I have two Entrepreneur High Schools that took a hard course to make and the passion to do it and the board helped all of those things. So we have to continue that. Lastly, I'd like to say this, is that June, I mean, May 25th at Valley College, and it's kind of interesting, it's at Valley College, we're going to have our Entrepreneur High graduation. You're all invited, just to come and see. It'll be there in the amphitheater. And the reason why I say it's interesting is because when they asked me to do credit recovery and the summer graduation and all of that, the first graduation that we had to try to improve the graduation rates was at Valley College in the amphitheater. Everything comes full circle. Everything comes full circle. My first entrepreneurial experience was at selling newspapers in front of Kmart where the old Waterman Gardens was. And we were able to buy a Kmart building and teach people entrepreneur skills. So as you go forward, just remember that everything you do, everyone's watching. And Doc, you know, you've been through, through the gamut of San Bernardino and you are part of a unique group. Welcome to the club. Because the only thing you can do now is find a way to achieve greatness and, and just keep moving. And thank you, everyone, come to the graduation, appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. Culberson, I had a light come on, so that must mean you're pretty popular for one or another reason. But well, go ahead and go to Ms. Savios.
Just wanted to clarify the time, you said May 25th at what time?
At six o'clock.
PM.
Yeah, six o'clock PM. And I think somebody's going to speak and so that'll be a good deal. Dr. Flores?
All right, thank you, Ms. Savios, Dr. Flores. Here we go.
I care for you so much and always supported you and because you supported our kids. And you believed in our kids. And I, it's great to see that you're doing such great work and inspiring us. And you're right, we have to get along. We have to get along so that we can move forward. And that is so important. And I just appreciate you so much and I appreciate your inspiring words. Thank you very much, my brother.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Wanted to make sure I mentioned it, you know, first of all, we go back and as a parent, and you were always amazing in that, in that aspect of mentorship. But the, the fact that I know someone that they're in their forties and that you helped them graduate high school, had it not been for you, and I know you helped many students, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. So I just wanted to do a shout out. Thank you.
Yeah, and definitely, Ray, I'm not going to call you Mr. Culberson, you definitely my brother in arms. And there's a saying that says the right thing isn't all, you know, the right thing is not always right. And the popular thing's not always right. And the right, you know what I'm saying? And you've always been the person that's gone against what's popular. You say what needs to be said and you've always fought for our kids and I've always respected you for that. And, you know, some people might not like your tactics, but I love them. And you've always done good for my kids and, you know, I'll always stand by you when, when you need somebody there, man. So, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. See you guys later.
All right, next public comment, Mr. William Bashirz, welcome.
Brought my bodyguards with me. Yes, we all get to speak. Hello, my name's William Bashirz. I'm a fourth grade gate teacher at Salinas Elementary, Creative Arts Elementary. And, oh, sorry. And I'm here to invite you guys to probably the first ever conceptual art show at the Rothman Museum at Cal State. So I'm just trying to open up a door, you know, because sometimes as administration, as higher-ups, it's very hard to see this kind of magic that happens in the classroom. It's hard for teachers too because it doesn't just come all the time. And we hear all these stories about COVID and whatnot, but this particular class that we've had has been outstanding. If you take just their reading word count from last year, in the next two weeks, they're going to reach an order of magnitude more than what they did last year. By 10. Five years ago, Professor Mango, were you, are you guys still sitting? Okay, Professor Mango and I partnered up with Al Najim, which was a program to sort of connect Cal State with my classroom. It started off with the first ever Arabic play. We went into the depths of Brazil and talked about Paulo Freire and Augusto Bol and the Theater of the Oppressed. Basically, we just threw out stuff that was impossible. This year, we threw out something that we knew nothing about, which is conceptual art. It's that type of art that when you go to a museum, you see the chair, you don't know whether you're supposed to sit in it or examine it. And we said, well, how can we bring the kids to this? It's impossible, it's inaccessible. It's the most thought-provoking art you could think of. We just did it. So this Friday, from five to seven, the artwork is being installed right now. You'll see artworks that deal a theme of family. And some of the stuff's pretty aggressive, parenting, the environment, family. You're going to see art that's going to force you to think on par with their college peers. That's all I need to say. So I'll call up Professor Mango to give a few words and then we'll drop off some flyers.
Hello, thank you so much. Is this good? Yeah, okay. Well, I told Mr. Bashirz he doesn't need me, he never needs me. I mean, he could do all this by himself. But I'm here to invite you. I hope that you can all come. This is just a wonderful project that we've been working on. But we've been doing this kind of work for about, for more than five years now. And the whole objective of it is just to bring people from the community together. So this was a project that brought so many people from the community together. So people from K-12, from Salinas Elementary, Cal State University, San Bernardino. We have teachers, parents, the students. I mean, I've been just so impressed with how involved the parents have been with this project. We start the conversations, they continue the conversations at home and then they come back. It's just been amazing. So parent support has been amazing. I'm also very thankful for Cal State for the support that they've given us, for Rothman Museum because there, we're going to have the art show there, but also other administrators and Office of Community Engagement also at this school. So I'm hoping that you can support us and that you can come. You know, it takes a village and your support would mean a lot for every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we had one more comment on here, right?
My name is Jasmine Reyes and this is my daughter Violet Reyes. She is a student in Mr. Bashirz's class. And she'd like to say something really quick.
And I'm sorry I didn't get her name?
Violet Reyes.
Violet, hi Violet, welcome.
Hello. As my mom said, my name is Violet Reyes and I'm, and currently I am a student at Salinas Elementary School in the gate program. And I would like to invite you, as Mr. Reyes has done, to the art show at Cal State University and at their Museum of Art where, where almost all of Mr. Bashirz's classes, art pieces will be presented on display for a week.
She got a little nervous, okay.
Well done Violet, well done. You did great.
So I just wanted to make a comment on, on this past year that Violet had in Mr. Bashirz's class. The year before, as we all know, they did a whole year of distance learning and that was really hard on all the kids. Some fell behind. Violet herself was actually almost bored at home because there wasn't enough for her to do, not enough for her to engage in. So I was really worried that that would, you know, deter her this year from doing what she needs to do to be at grade level. And she far surpassed that with the expectations Mr. Bashirz gave the class. She told me at the beginning of the year, they have to read a million words by the end of the school year. And she's read three million now.
Woo, all right, wow.
And I couldn't be more proud of her. And the opportunities they had working with a college professor, she came home excited, talking about it every single week. And I feel like it just shows that, you know, you put the expectations out there. It seems like it was a lot for them in the fourth grade. They're all, you know, nine and 10 years old and they all rose to the occasion. And now they get to have their artwork out there for you all to see. And I can't wait to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we might have a couple of questions for the four of you. And we'll start with Dr. Flores.
Violet, thank you for coming. What grade are you in, Mihah?
I'm in fourth grade.
In fourth grade. And are you exhibiting an art piece?
Yes.
And what is its name? Or do you have a name for it?
Yes, I gave it a name. It is called Masked with Beauty.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's called Masked with Beauty.
Wow, Masked with Beauty, really creative. I want to thank you, Mr. Bashirz and Dr. Mango for all your work. It's just amazing, the creativity that you organize for our kids is just amazing. And, and also you can witness it, you know, from Violet and Mrs. Reyes. You, your eyes are brilliant and your face is brilliant. You're all shining, just all this light. And so I just, I hope that I can be there. I have to change my, my flight. So don't worry, Karen, I'll do it. And because I'm supposed to fly out, but I think I'm going to change it so that I can come and, and support you. So thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Savios.
Yes, so congratulations. Oh, my gosh, I'm so proud of you. You're, you come up here and you speak so well. How old are you again?
I'm 10 years old.
10 years old, wow. Well, congratulations to you, mom, as well. I just wanted to say, you know, high expectations, you said it. You know, having high expectations for our students, they rise to the occasion, right? If, if they know that we believe that they can do it, they do it. Again, not every student is meant to be an athlete. Again, not every student is meant to be an athlete, right? We need to be able to support programs like these more so. We want to be able to be a well-rounded district that has opportunities for all of our students. And then also, I wanted to ask, who's, who's back there? Who's that?
That's my sister, Aurora.
Oh, my goodness, you have the biggest cheerleader. As you were speaking up there, she was standing up clapping for you. Right on. Well, congratulations. Good to see you here.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales, Vice President Tillman.
I have a question for you. What type of art do you do? Do you, are you a sculptor? Do you paint? What is it that you do, actually?
I do all types of art, like drawing, painting, and now conceptual art, because of my teacher.
So what is it at Cal State San Bernardino?
My art piece is about how women, they use makeup to how, how they feel. It is a mask painted completely with makeup on this glass head on a comb that has, has a statement about, about makeup.
What's the statement?
It is, makeup is a ma, is a mask or a form of expressionism? Which is it for you?
Love it. Thank you.
Wow, is all I could say. Ms. Rosales Medina, expressionism, wow, that's a huge word.
I love it, I love it. And I know we're, we're, I think for every public comments, we're, we're finding ways to interject some, some comments here. But the reality is, is that I was, I, I was in athletics, and I was, I, art is what kind of saved me through my piece. And so I did both. But in this aspect, I think the art aspect, you know, really works, you know, I, I know I was, I went and fostered Karen a little, a little moment there. But that helped me kind of be creative and think outside of the realm that I was in. And so I appreciate you doing the work that you're doing. And even with that makeup and what it symbolizes, that's creative thinking. I know the, the arts programs, the, the Gate Program also there is an amazing program. I know Dr. Bashirz has worked with different types of art, which is poetry as well. And this is another piece of it. So I wanted to appreciate that, Ms., Dr. Mango as well, for thank you so much for coming down.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And please make it quick. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make it really quick. I just wanted to share with you that I'm engaged in a worldwide discussion, conversation with scholars from all over the world that are Raghatskians. He was a, a theoretician who believed that learning and teaching should be combined. We need to teach to the potential, and it's through our social interaction, right? And the topic is children's creativity and imagination. And so it's, we meet once a month for about an hour, hour and a half. And Dr. Mango, and if you would like to join, I, I can also add you to the, to the, to, but anyway, it's just fascinating. And so Violet, I wish I could interview you so I could give them your rendition, maybe we will, of what, imagine, how you use your imagination and creativity. So that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I will just end with a question, actually. So, Ms. Bashirz, I'm seeing on your, your chart here that you handed to us that the national average for 4th grade is about 305,000 words. Is that what that means?
According to Accelerated Reader.
Okay, Accelerated Reader, okay.
So if you look at the COVID year, it was about 200,000 words per student for 4th grade. Pre-COVID, it was 300,000. She's the one that's at 3 million.
I see that. And that's where I'm going with that, right? And it looks like your expectation for all your students is about a million words. Is that correct?
Correct. And we're gonna hit probably 66% of the class hitting a million.
Outstanding. And that's why I'm bringing it up, because I know Mr. Irving here, one of his goals was academic excellence and a strategic plan for excellence. And I would say your classroom is working towards excellence.
It's, it's, it's all about behaviors. I mean, I know I've mentioned this before when I've come up here. Kids don't go to college, family goes to college. So it's all about behaviors. You give me the right behaviors, the work ethic, the ability to endure, the ability to take the pressure I put on them. If they can withstand that, then they rise to the occasion.
I would agree with you.
We're, in a weird way, we're in the way of the kids, right?
Absolutely. Well, thank you for raising the bar, you know, against the average. We don't want average for our kids. And by, you blew his bar way out. So, great job. About 3 million words, we need to highlight that. You're absolutely right. Great job. And Mom, I know you're proud, so thank you again. All right, we'll move on to our next public comment. Linda Hart, welcome, Ms. Hart. It's good to see you. With COVID, it feels like it's been forever, so it's good to see you.
It's good to see you as well. But trust me, in the community, we hear a lot of what's going on, so I'm listening. To the superintendent, the president of the board, and board members. Actually, Dr. Scott, I wish I could have mentioned this while you have your, had your athletic directors here, because this actually is something that in collaboration with Ms. Gail Parker, Community Outreach with the DEA in the Los Angeles Sparks, along with the San Bernardino Probation Department, is hosting a basketball and self-care clinic. And so I really had wished that they had this information, because it will be held at Indian Springs. I had an opportunity to visit. They came to, the DEA approached me to find a high school. And as soon as I got to Indian Springs and looked at the others, definitely they were on my list. And so this is a great opportunity when we talk about collaborating with other entities that are interested in our students as well. I just hope that we can get the numbers of students there. Trust me, it was not easy. For some reason, members such as athletics, professional athletics, and other entities and organizations have a hard time wanting to come to San Bernardino. Rightfully so, because they as well hear what happens here at the board. And trust me, what happens at the board, I heard the word impact. It impacts the community as well. And so, Mr. Irving, Dr. Irving, I didn't really get a chance to meet you. I am a third generation of San Bernardino Unified High School. Actually, one of the first group to desedicate Sagriong High School, where we were escorted for months by the U.S. National Guards. And so, yes, we experienced the same thing they did in Alabama. So during the years with Francis Grice, along with others who have been my mentor, there are individuals actually standing on your shoulders. And I greatly want to say, that was my cousin Ray. It runs in the family advocacy. I definitely want to say that, from what I heard, you wanted the best. And sometimes changes are not received well. I know for myself, many times I've stepped to this podium to talk about the issues with black students, attendance, suspensions. There were a lot of pushback by some of you that I'm looking at today. So stay encouraged, pray for you and your family, and God bless you. I'm not sure if Gail was able, that's another thing. There were people who were not able to register to get into your website, because it's down. I don't know if you know that.
She's listed.
Oh, she is? Okay, great. And she will chime in. I'm going to step back and have her share more about the program and the reason why we chose San Bernardino. Again, thank you.
Sorry, I do have a question. Thank you, number one, for bringing this to our attention, because I did not know about it. And I, as you know, I work with probation every day of the week, so I'm kind of surprised that. My programs weren't invited. Maybe they were, and I don't know that. But is there still slots for people to attend?
Yes, we are looking to host 150 students.
That, that's your target?
Yes, that's our target. So we really need.
It's this Saturday, I think that is?
Yes, it is.
And I do apologize that, I know three of us are gonna be out of town, working, but not playing.
Well, you all are invited.
But I want to make sure that I get this flyer out to my programs tomorrow, which I would promise you I will. And I will also be talking to probation to find out why my kids weren't invited for county. Because I'm gonna make sure they're invited.
Yes, most definitely. This is an opportunity that doesn't come all the time. We're talking about coaches from the LA Sparks coming in, along with the DEA. These are individuals who have a lot of resources that can impact a whole district. So we want to continue to build that collaboration.
Yeah, and I, I'm not knocking probation, because I want to compliment them. They take very good care of my kids, our kids at county, and they provide transportation all the time when I can't.
They have a lot of resources.
Oh, I know they do. So that's why I know, you know, we could get our kids there, they'll transport them for us. I'll have people, my staff, be there. I want to get this word out. So I want to make sure we get as many kids there. Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Hart, for coming. And she had been sharing this out for quite some time. But I did apologize in advance and share with her that when I looked at the date, all, all this time I thought I was gonna be able to come. But, you know, we will be gone, but that doesn't stop us from sharing the information and, and the information that has been shared, because I totally was in support of this and was like, oh, my gosh, we'll be in Sacramento. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you. You're doing a good job up there.
Thank you again. Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. And we'll get that word out. And let's make sure we get it to our A.D.s as well, so we could fill the house.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You got it. All right. Our next public comment is Alyssa Payne. Come on up, Alyssa.
Good evening. I'm Alyssa Payne.
Let's pull it down just a little bit closer.
I know. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm Alyssa Payne. Some of you know me as Ellie Payne. Sorry for being late. I had to threaten a couple of kids' freedom to do their chores and homework, but I made it. I come to you guys as a parent, I come to you guys as a peer, and then also as a board of people that I look up to, who I trust my children with on a daily basis. I'm a mom of seven. I currently have five in the San Bernardino School District. So I have students at San Bernardino High School, I have students at Arrow View and at Lincoln, all of which are dear to my heart, having raised my kids in the 2nd Ward and got to know the teachers. I'm also an educator myself. I'm a community activist. I never planned on coming here, because I just, hats down to you guys, surviving COVID and the distance learning. I'm a community activist. I started a parent page called San Bernardino Student and Parent Support. Some of you know about it, some of you don't. And I was really trying to make a way for parents to communicate with the staff and with the teachers and students and share information, and kind of lessen the stress on everybody. So I'm a big fan of you guys. But I come here in a lot of anger today. And as a parent, I'm very disappointed. And it's nothing personally on anybody. I know that we all have a lot on our plate. And then we're kind of help raising these kids that are coming through our school system. Some of them whose only home life they get is in the classroom. So it's a lot on, on the educator's shoulders and on the staff's shoulders. Most recently, my biggest concern is with my high school student. He's a 10th grader who's currently lost all freedom but eating and, and living in the house, because we've been seeing issues of truancy and ditching and a lot of extracurricular activities that I did not sign no parental consent for. He goes to San Bernardino High School. Since last week, him and a group of friends did get in trouble. They were punished and disciplined. But I've been on the campus, and I'm a very active parent, which saddens me, because I think if I'm an active parent and there's parents that aren't as active as I am, what are they missing out on and not seeing? So I've been visiting the campus quite often. I love the staff, they're really great, they're really helpful. And the thing that has saddened me the most, that brought me here today, was that for the last two weeks, I've been monitoring, being a resident of 2nd Ward, I see a lot of students outside the school, in the grass area, at the stores, at the dairy across the street, at the Last Drop Liquor Store. When I walk onto campus, as of today, I was on campus, I signed in. And when I walked on campus, I was directed to the library. They directed me through the office. Now, I was informed that my student, who's yet to see what it's like to have no rights for a while, because he's been ditching, but his attendance and his truancies were all received on campus. Now, I live in the 2nd Ward, and I'm a, I'm a coach, I'm a mother, I'm a teacher, and a lot of the students that I see coming from San Bernardino High School are having multiple truancies, multiple absences, ditching. But it's not just like they're gone the whole day. They'll go to 1st period, 2nd period, they're gone 3rd period, they're gone 4th period, then they come back 5th period. And these kids are failing these classes. So I got, I went to the school to see what the issue is. And today, like I said, I was at the campus for my like 4th, 5th day in a row, starting last week. And I'm directed onto campus, and when I'm on campus, and forgive me, because I hate to see my son face any retaliation for what I'm about to say, there is literally kids rolling blunts. There is literally kids hitting vape pipes. There was kids in the stairway to the library, in the courtyard, outside the cafeteria, outside the school, and in the construction zone. So being my 4th or 5th day at the school campus, I addressed the staff. And I think what bothered me most is their response. And their response was like, oh, we know, it's so sad. We keep telling them to go to class, and there's more of them than us, and we can only tell them so many times. So my biggest concern is me as a parent, as a working parent, which in this demographics, there's a lot of us that have to work two or three jobs, and we're entrusting the district and the staff and the educators with our kids. I'm surprised to see that my kid has this many absences and truancies and ditches, and nobody's contacted me. I'm surprised to see that they all happened on campus. I'm surprised to see that when I walk on campus, it's like Coachella. I was like, hey, why am I going to work? I should be coming to San Bernardino High School and just, you know, bringing a drink and hanging out, because the kids are there openly rolling, rolling marijuana, openly hitting vape pens, openly ditching multiple periods a day. Now, as a mom, I'm not like the not-my-billy type of mom, where like, no, not my kid, no, my kid, he's in trouble. But what about the rest of these kids who parents don't care? What about the rest of these kids that are failing and failing and failing, and then only a certain amount of them are allowed into summer school? But really, it starts, like we say, it starts at home.
Time.
I apologize. Okay. I wish we could keep going.
Payne, I'll reach out. I'll have somebody make sure we reach out to you. But I, I will say on behalf of the district, that if that is the experience that you had up there, then I'll have to apologize for that, because that is not, because you, and if anybody have heard me say, and I'll say it again here, that I've always said that every school must be a good school. And every school has to be at the highest level of excellence. And I know that there's times when people don't agree with me on that. But again, you know, as we move forward in the district, and we know they put this framework for excellence, and one of the goals was to break our districts up into clusters and to a service delivery model that will address, that would have addressed that issue that you're talking about, because we would put a lot of resources and supports on the ground to deal with that. And I have visited that campus, but I will say that that is not, that should be not, that should be not the norm. That should never be happening on any campus, anywhere, because every school has to be a good school, every school. But because I'm the superintendent as of right now, then I have to be, I have to take responsibility for that, because I did not know that, and I wish I would have known that, because typically I try to get out to those campuses.
By all means, I'm not trying to point the finger.
No, 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 but absolutely. But I'm still, I'm still responsible, because as superintendent, that shouldn't happen on any campus.
I just invite you to park outside the high school tomorrow morning with a Red Bull and a donut, and just watch the kids walk off campus freely.
I'm gonna go over there tomorrow, obviously, unfortunately.
I'll bring the Red Bull.
My team will be out there, but that shouldn't be happening. But again, I think I encourage this, you as a community member in this board, and all of them, as I transition out as superintendent, that if you truly believe that every school should be a good school, then that should never happen any place on any of our campuses.
I truly believe that if you're gonna hold accountable minority students for not passing and not making the grades, that we should hold accountable the educators and the staff that are taking the paycheck every day and not enforcing the rules.
I don't disagree with that, but, you know, again.
And I'm not trying to downtalk anybody, because we all hold accountability. Myself, my child, the staff. But if we're not communicating, and we're not enforcing the handbook that we're handing out in the beginning of the year, but then saying, hey, you're failing. Well, no, you're not telling me to go to class. You're sitting here taking a paycheck on Instagram while I'm smoking a blunt in Coachella courtyard.
Well, remember, Ms. Payne, remember, Ms. Payne, I've said this at the last meeting, silence is acceptance. If you see that behavior happening and you don't say anything, then you're just as complicit.
That's why I'm here.
And so I will let you know that tomorrow, I'll talk with Dr. Rodriguez and the team, and we'll make sure that we'll address that. And again, on behalf of the district, apologize if that was your experience. And we'll take a look at it.
No apology needed, we're a village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, don't leave your.
I have one more question.
Ms. Payne. Dr. Flores has a question for you, please.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming forth. And all of us on this board, thank you, because that, that is unacceptable, totally unacceptable. And we all want our kids to be in, in healthy environments and also have rules, have discipline, have. And we all want our kids to be in healthy environments and also have rules, have discipline, have consequences. And, you know, also, you know, find out why they're being truant and why they're...
Well, because if the staff has a we-don't-care attitude, the students will have a we-don't-care attitude.
So I'm glad that the superintendent says they're gonna go, but I appreciate you coming, and...
It's embarrassing to sit here and be like, yeah, my 10th grader was ditching and he was doing this, but...
Well, you know, kids are influenced. I was a high school teacher. They're influenced by their peers.
No excuse, but it starts with the example.
Yeah, it's not the parents, it's their peers that have more influence on them.
Well, also, if they see the staff and the parents working together, they're gonna be less likely to try to go against the flow. And that's where we're missing, the lack of communication and accountability of the staff.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I apologize too.
No, you should not apologize. It's apparent. I'm a mother. If I were to see that, I would be right there too.
If I can give my kids bread and water right now, I promise you, my house is on lockdown. See, I quit in lockdown right now, so.
Thank you so much.
Good, Dr. Flores, and again, thank you for, you know, being here tonight. I always say, it may not be what we want to hear, but what we need to hear.
Right.
Right? And we're not gonna turn a blind eye to this, and I absolutely agree with Mr. Urban, our superintendent here, on his comments as well. And trust me, I'm a father of two kids as well. They're now graduated, and I would say they were no saints.
Right.
Right? But what we do need and what we do appreciate is when parents come and they let us know what's going on, and then they help us with finding a solution, because I always say it's, we can't do it alone. We need our families, our community, and our parents right there by our side, you know, addressing these issues with their children, because that's what we want, what's best for them. And so, you know, I applaud you for being here today and saying what needs to be said to all of us. And I can assure you, this board doesn't want that for any of our kids as well, and we need to hold our staff accountable. Thank you.
Well, also, there's a lack of, the demographics that we live in, automatically, we know that there's gonna be a lack of, unfortunately, we have to say, some parents that really don't care. And when we take that oath and we step up as teachers and educators, deep down, you know you're not just gonna be a teacher. You're gonna be there for that child in times of their life that their parents aren't even gonna be there for. So when we see them messing up, we shouldn't be like, oh, well, that's just another kid from San Bernardino. No. This can be the one kid that may become the board or may become a president, but if we just kind of give it like, well, that's where you're from, you know, well, look at your mom. No, these kids need to be guided, and that's our job, and that's your job. And that's where we need to come together as a village, because we're losing kids, they're failing, and they're meeting the norm of the statistics and demographics we live in, and that's not why you guys are here, and that's not why I'm here. And that's not what we want for any of these kids. We're losing enough in the streets.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it for in-person comments, public comments. We're gonna move on to virtual public comments, and I believe we have Anazir.
No, they're not. They're not here.
Oh, they're not? Anya Wili? Okay, I wanted to practice that anyway because that was a challenging one. So I apologize, they're not here, and then it looks like Gail Parker is our next virtual speaker. Welcome.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We sure can. Welcome, Ms. Parker.
Well, thank you so very much, and good evening to all of you. And Linda, thank you for the introduction, and thank you, Board, for giving me this opportunity to speak with you tonight. And I have to say, I'm just so pleasantly surprised to hear of all the students, student groups that came forward and presented, and excited to hear that your students have found value and benefit in the programs that's being offered to them. One student mentioned taking action to make change, and that's exactly the words that we want to hear. I will give a brief introduction. I know I have five minutes. Give a brief introduction into the program and oversee some of the details for the events, for the event that Linda also mentioned. If you would like additional opportunity to speak with me, I can present that as well if you ask, as well as Linda have that information. So my name is Gail Parker, and I oversee the education and engagement for the Southern California region of the Drug Enforcement Administration, the L.A. Field Division. I work with the Operation Engage Program, which is a drug prevention and educational campaign to raise awareness about the nation's opioid crisis by uplifting and providing supportive programs, resources, events, and education to the community with a primary focus on the youth, because as many of you have heard today, they are our future, and we want to see positive impact, and therefore, we must invest, we must invest in them. Since COVID-19, the numbers of overdose deaths has increased to over 100,000, 100,000 people in the last year. The public health pandemic continues to change, but it has not changed the need to encourage and inspire families, communities, and especially our young people to live a drug-free life. As you have heard from your parents tonight, they want support, they want uplifting activities, they want sports events, and they want other opportunities. We also know that many times the school and the school district cannot do this alone, and we want you to know that we are here to help. We want to give the students opportunities for exposure, to educate them about things also outside of the classroom, to increase their scope. We want to be able to mitigate the risk of drug exposure and the drug use to all. We are committed to fighting the drug, through drug use, I'm sorry, we're committed to fighting drug use through prevention and education and teaching the youth about team-building skills, self-expression, resisting peer pressure, living their dreams, and making lifestyle choices that goes beyond the campaign of we-know-it, of just saying no to drugs. They want education. They want to know the why in things and not just to say no. So you had a parent that expressed a negative experience just now from a high school, and we have to make changes within those environments, as you have well said. We believe in the partnership and collaboration between all of us can open up many spaces for learning, for awareness, and to continue the progression for these efforts to be made for our young people. So I first want to talk about the event for this coming Saturday, and I have to say, I'm a little bit disappointed by the numbers that we have shown in registration. We had a strong interest from Linda Hart, and we're bringing this event to you in partnership with the L.A. Sparks, Linda's group, the African-American Health Coalition, San Bernardino County Prohibition, and our DEA Education Foundation. The event will serve ages 10 to 18, and we have gone that far because we know they're starting younger and younger to get involved with drug use. We want to give the students a lifetime opportunity to not only speak with coaches, but also to interact with them and learn from professional basketball coaches. And you don't have to be an athlete or, you know, have a strong interest in basketball to participate because there will also be other sessions that will take place. Even the coaches will not only talk about basketball skills and abilities, but they'll talk about the winning mindset and how to create that. We will also have a former DEA agent, I'm sorry, a former CIA agent and current DEA agent having an interactive session. They'll talk about, they'll have the students looking at their future self, how to create a winning mentality, why is it important to dream and take challenges, as well as many other topics. The students have shown that they are interested in learning about these things and how to make better choices. So I urge you to please, whatever you do, to give out this information and get those numbers increased, because as you know, with anything with funding, we have to show the reach and we have to show the impact. Without that, it's very difficult for me to go back to my superiors and to support other events in the future. So again, I thank you so very much for having me here tonight, and also understand that we have other programs such as baseball, dance, STEM, soccer, and we can also bring in other resources to your community. We, as DEA, we're not here to take over and tell your community what to do. I'm here to come in, as I've listened to Linda Hart, and reach out to her, to what she's asking. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, and this is great information. Really glad Ms. Hart shared it with us, and like I said, I'll be sharing it as well in my organization. So thank you again, and great to hear you have more events too that we would love to host, so appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that's it for public comments. Thank you, Karen. We'll move on to 4.0, closed session, closed session, public comments.
No comments.
All right, we'll move on to 4.2, closed session agenda, and we'll be back.
Well, hello to our classified school employees. Happy Employee Week. I can't believe we only give you a week of recognition. You deserve so much more. Each and every day, each and every day, you do everything for our scholars and for our community to make things happen. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for being the rock that we all stand on. We know that our classified employees, our support staff, you serve as our backbone. You are the infrastructure to the success of the district. You help everybody else thrive, and for that, we thank you. We honor you. We cherish you. We know we cannot do it without you. You are the community. You are our families, and you love our district, and for that, we love you. So enjoy your week. Revel in it. Take it all in. You deserve that and so much more. Have a great rest of your day and your evening, and make sure that your team is spoiling you because you deserve it. Bye.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Marcus Funches. This just in, San Bernardino City Unified School District, just named, the Inland Empire's greatest place to work. This prestigious award has been provided, given to us based on the hard work and dedication of our classified employees, our classified workers in across the district. Nutrition services, human resources, business services, maintenance and operation, our clerical and secretarial staff, custodial staff, job well done, school police, and many others. Our classified employees over the past year and a half joining forces with all of our workforce and management to bring our scholars back and get our community back to what we call learning in person. Job well done. This just in, San Bernardino City Unified School District, best place to work because of our classified workforce. As we celebrate you this week, know that your work is important. Know that your work is very much a part of what we do on a daily basis. We appreciate you.
Hi, on behalf of the Student Services Division, I want to thank all of our classified employees for the hard work that you do every single day, from our health aides to our custodians, our office staff. All of you make such a difference in the lives of kids, and this week, we salute you. Thank you so much for everything that you do.
Hello to all of our classified employees out there. I just wanted to take this opportunity to really thank you from the bottom of my heart. You absolutely have stepped up and just been so crucial to everything that we do here in SBCUSD. Your contributions cannot be underestimated. I am just filled with joy when I think about how you guys stepped up during this pandemic. Many of you didn't skip a beat. You came to work every day. You continued to come to work despite situations not being ideal, right? And you continue to do what you do for our kids and for their families, so I'll never forget that. I just thank you so much for all that you do, day in and day out. It goes without saying that obviously, we could not educate our kids without you. So don't underestimate your contributions to our students and to their achievement and to their family as well. So thank you so much for everything. I just wanted to have a chance to give you a shout out and tell you that I love hearing from all of you, and I love your feedback, and you really are what keeps us going, so. Thank you for all that you do. Again, I can't say it enough. Happy Classified Employee Appreciation Week.
Hi there. I'm Harold Solins. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Business, Facilities, and Operations here at San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'd like to take a few moments to recognize the extraordinary work of our classified employees. The last two years has been unlike any that we have ever seen. We have all been challenged, both personally and professionally, through this pandemic. When the students and community needed you most, you answered the call, making sure that our students did not miss a meal, that our facilities and campuses were safe and clean, that our students, including our most vulnerable, received the academic support that is so desperately needed, that our students and families had a friendly and helpful person to speak with, that our students were looked after and cared for, that ensured our employees and vendor partners were paid on time, that ensured we had the resources available to provide top-notch educational programs and services, that ensured our students had the tools and technology to succeed, and the list goes on. I have seen firsthand the dedication and commitment that you demonstrate on a daily basis, and I applaud you for all that you do. The work that you do matters, and you matter. Happy Classified School Employee Week. We celebrate you and the difference you make each day. Thank you.
Hello, and happy Classified Employee Appreciation Week. I'm Ginger Antiveros, the Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer for the San Bernardino City Unified School District, and I know that we could not function the way that we do without you. I mean, you quite literally keep our lights on. Now, whether that's preparing food and serving it to our students so that their lights can shine, or keeping our school offices clean and cool and powered so that our lights work, some of you even make sure that our computer screens miraculously light up when we turn them on. Others pay our bills and make sure that we get paid too. Your smiles light up our offices. On my own team of classified heroes, we're producing videos and publications, writing letters and news posts, translating messages so that our families can understand them, and answering the phone when people in our community call. Classified employees, you are not only the backbone of our district, you are the muscles that keep us moving. Thank you so much for being essential every day, and happy Classified Employee Appreciation Week.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We're back from closed session. We'll go on to 5.0, Action Reporter from Closed Session. And let me catch up here. And I apologize if I butchered any of these names. I'll try my best. So we'll go ahead with 5.1, Approval of Elementary School Principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Heather Bjornberg, Elementary School Principal, site, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? It was moved by Dr. Flores, second by Dr. Rogers. All right, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Is Ms. Bjornberg here tonight? She is not? Okay, well, congratulations to her, and welcome to the principal life. We'll move on to number two, 5.2. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Tamara Brown, Elementary School Principal, site, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Brown. Are you here this evening? Go ahead and let's stand up and welcome. Very good. Good job. Congratulations. 5.3, Elementary School Principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Is it Kalila? Kalila? Kalila. I'm gonna go with Kalila. Kalila Lewis Wilkins, Elementary School Principal, site, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. It's been moved and probably second by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, and congratulations to Kalila Lewis Wilkins. Is she here this evening? She is not, so hope you're out there in the virtual world, and congratulations to you two as well. Move on to 5.4, Approval of Elementary School Principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Christine Ramirez Showes, Elementary School Principal, site, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Christine Ramirez Showes. Are you here this evening? All right, congratulations to you two as well. We'll move on to 5.5. Approval of high school principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Anna Sosa, high school principal. Samuelio High School, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. It's been moved and properly second by Ms. Sevios. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. And yes, she is here this evening. I know her, so go ahead and stand up so we can say congratulations. Congratulations, Ms. Sosa. We'll miss you on Friday night, lights at the Cajon games, but I guess we'll have to go to the Cardinal game there to honor some of our Cardinals up here. Yeah, I know. So we'll have to see you on some Friday nights there. But thank you for all you've done at Cajon as well. It's always been great seeing you there.
Congratulations.
5.6, approval of coordinator specialized programs. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Dora Burrows, coordinator specialized programs. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Dora Burrows. Are you here this evening? All right, she is not. And that is it for our promotions. And that's exciting time of going into the end of the year and getting ready for the new school year. So congratulations to our new admin team that's joining us in the ranks. And we look forward to seeing you out in the schools. We'll move on to 5.7. Expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations in order to expulsion the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second by Ms. Sevios. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Dr. Rogers, I have you down saying that you're not present. Is that a yes vote for you?
It should be a yes. It didn't take at first, so.
Oh, well, we have to do a verbal. You sure? Might be easier. All right, let's go ahead and revote, folks. Yeah, that's fine, thank you. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.8. Students recommended. Let me get on the right one there. Sorry about that. Students are recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts a... oop, gosh, mine just took off all over. The recommendation for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.9. Students recommended for expulsion but terminated in student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of correction, and/or due process errors. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students who are recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they are recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.10. Petition to expun, resent, or modify youth court or expulsion. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorized expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the Samuelio Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.11, other closed section action. And I will be reading these out individually and will have to take action on them individually. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee has been given notice prior to March 15th, 2022, that he or she shall be released from the assignment as a vice principal at the end of the 2021-2022 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his or her credential authorizations effective at the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year. And the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to get written notice of this action pursuant to Education Code 44951. And it's HR-CERT-21-22-09-ER.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Ms. Sevios. Any discussion?
Dr. Wyatt, I'm gonna have to do a verbal on each one of these, okay?
Oh, okay, my apologies. So we'll go ahead and start to my left for a verbal yea or nay. Ms. Sevios? Or I, thank you. Dr. Wyatt, aye. Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Daddy Rogers? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the next one. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to suspend without pay for three days the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote.
Is it verbal again?
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the next one. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the last one. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or employment with the district.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 6.0, public hearing. We'll go ahead and close this session. Open up the public hearing session. 6.1, public hearing from Samuelio Schools Police Officer Association contract proposal successor to Samuelio City Unified School District. The public hearing for the Samuelio School Police Officers Association contract proposal successor to the Samuelio City Unified School District is now open. I should have banged it then, sorry. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Read and vote, that's what I gotta do next. All right, so I think, do we have to take a vote first or do we read the resolution first? Miss Cunningham? All right, thank you very much. Be it resolved, the Board of Education received the initial contract proposal from the Samuelio Police Officer Association.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 6.2. All right, public hearing and approval of the Memorandum of Understanding for Summer School 2022 between Samuelio City Unified School District and SBTA. I'm gonna go ahead and open that. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the Memorandum of Understanding of Summer School 2022 between the Samuelio City Unified School District and the Samuelio Teachers Association.
All moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All right, motion carries. I'll go ahead and close public hearing and then open up our board meeting once again. We will move on to 7.0, reports by union organizations. 7.1, Samuelio Teachers Association.
All moved.
I think on that one, we actually were waiting for a report.
All right, no comment.
Oh, okay, no comments, that's okay.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, there's Ms. Akala.
I thought you had another action item before 7.0.
Six point, did we do 6.3?
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. I didn't see that one. My apologies. I was wondering why somebody moved in front. Sorry, Ms. Akala, you have to wait a little bit.
That's why we said motion.
I couldn't see anything else. All right. All right, well, let me...
6.3.
Close the regular session, because I did that. And then we'll go ahead and open for 6.3, public disclosure of proposed SBTA bargaining agreement, Business Services. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the proposed collective borrowing agreement with Samuelio Teachers Association, SBTA, effective June 6, 2022 through June 30, 2022 in accordance with AB 1200 requirements as attached.
All moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. I'm gonna go ahead and close that and then reopen our board meeting. Apologies about that. Reports by union organizations, 7.0. 7.1, Samuelio Teachers Association. All right, welcome, Ms. Akala.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Solomon, Superintendent Irvin, Cabinet, and members of the board. Thank you for approving our MOU for summer school. We do appreciate that so we can continue with the extended learning programs as we did last summer. What you may not know is that today, May 17, is California Teachers Association ESP, which stands for Education Support Professional Day. And we are grateful to our education support professionals and classified staff for their tireless efforts. Our classified brothers and sisters are the front line of public education. They begin with that first school bus ride in the morning and end, that day ends when the custodian turns off the lights at night. And we would not have been able to persevere during this pandemic without our classified partners and colleagues working alongside us. And we just wanted to take a moment to say that we appreciate you today and every day, and we thank you for all that you do as classified employees to support our schools, our students, and their families. I also would like to take a moment to acknowledge our school nurses. Last Wednesday, May 11, was National School Nurse Day. We would like to honor our school nurses who care for our students in our schools every day and to remind you that a school nurse provides more than just Band-Aids. They are first responders for medical concerns. They advocate for students, and they play a vital role in guiding our students to healthy lifestyles. Every employee within our education community is important and plays a part in impacting our students so they are able to thrive and learn in our schools. And SBTA, we appreciate all of them. Our members, our classified brothers and sisters, our administrators, not just at this time of the year, but every day. I also look forward to seeing all of you, board members, and some of our cabinet members at our annual Monty and retiree awards celebration later this week. So we look forward to celebrating with our retirees and our Monty winners. And we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 7.2, California School Employees Association.
Good evening, Doc Irvin, Mr. President, board members, staff, and community. My name is Miguel Hernandez. I am currently a campus security officer and CSEA's second vice president and union steward. I've been with the district for approximately 22 years, starting out as a substitute for the district, but held many different positions for the first six years, such as working at the nutrition services, as a nutrition services driver, custodian, secretary, bilingual health aide, accounts payable, and microcomputer specialist. In recognition of Classified Appreciation Week, I would like to give a big thank you to our MNO department, the electricians, the plumbers, painters, landscapers, and our custodians for their continued work in keeping up our sites in working condition and clean, and keeping them looking beautiful year round, working outside in the heat and in the cold. Our cafeteria staff and nutrition services for their services to students and staff. All the IT staff for their work during state testing and throughout the school year. Last but not least, our office staff, which are always working very hard to keep open communication with parents and helping maintain the day-to-day working of the site. Thank you, President and Board, for your time and allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you for all your hard work. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, appreciate it. Move on to 7.3, Communication Workers of America.
No comments.
All right, no comments. 7.4, Samuelio School Police Officers Association.
No comments.
All right, no comments. 8.0, reports and comments. 8.1, board member comments. We will start to my left with Ms. Sevios.
Thank you, President Dr. Wyatt. So I actually have a list of comments that I wanted to share last time at our last board meeting. But, you know, other comments took precedent. As last board meeting, we did hear that our superintendent was deciding to retire. So I will be carrying those today. So there were a lot of things happening in the district, you know, then as well as now. I did want to tell teachers, Happy Teachers Appreciation Week, late. I did want to tell teachers, happy Teachers Appreciation Week, late. Also, you know, again, recognizing Chavez Middle School's drum line for taking first place at the A D L eight championship, I did want to mention that last board meeting as well. Congratulations to Matt Maeda from San G for being named California State Athletic Director of the Year. Congratulations to the Seventh Annual Latino History B winners, I did want to recognize them as well. I also wanted to, you know, mention that May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and then also, May 1st was National School Principals' Day, and just wanted to also say thank you to all of our principals and vice principals and the whole team, really. And I also wanted to move forward with some of my running list that I have, there are more questions at this point that I have, so if somebody can, you know, kind of help answer some of these. So in terms of policies, board policies, when are we looking to bring back the Facilities Use Agreement Board Policy for review? I know we had done a first reading on that, is second reading coming up at some point, or what's the next step?
I believe that's coming, Harold, at the next meeting, right?
That is, that is correct, we're working with our legal team to make revisions, and we will be bringing that forward.
So that's coming up, okay, June 7th, thank you. And then also, what about that A through G Board Policy?
The next step there would be to reconvene our subcommittee, to have the subcommittee review the feedback that was given, and then for that to return to the board for discussion. So also looking at an early June subcommittee date.
So we'll be looking forward to hearing from your office to reconvene the subcommittee?
By early June, for the subcommittee committee meeting to take place in early June.
And then also, I had mentioned a while back to look at creating a policy to establish some end time of board meetings. I don't know, you know, if we can revisit that and what the process would be for that.
We just have to bring, if there's a desire to put it on the agenda, I'll talk with Dr. Wyatt offline, and we'll bring it back on June 7th or 17th. I didn't have support last time, but we can bring it back again.
Okay, yeah, only because, again, we didn't really get to discuss maybe alternative end times. I know that the board didn't want a 10:30 end specifically, but maybe we can discuss alternative times. And then also, I had called to create a board policy for translating assessment reports, specifically psychoeducational assessment reports and I E Ps in a timely manner, as well as setting some timelines to respond to independent evaluations, and I yet to hear from anybody, so I just wanted to see what, you know, next steps are.
We just got a proposed policy, and so we have to make an appointment with the policy committee in order for them to review it before it comes to the board. We just got that probably Friday.
When are we looking to hopefully contact the subcommittee?
That just, I think we've already processed that, so we're waiting on scheduling, and that goes through Karen's office.
We have a estimated time?
That's up to how your guys' calendars work.
Karen just sent out three dates that we had.
Were that specific?
For, three dates for all the, all the subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, so we need to have dates, and then we'll bring those, once we have a date, then we can give you all the information that you need.
So I'll reach out to Karen?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, and then, so also, I just wanted to kind of remind us that I did have, I did had made the request to have a sitting attorney at every board meeting, and again, I still haven't heard anything about that, so I was just wondering what the next steps for that is. Or are.
Yeah, that's still a good idea, but I'll talk to Dr. Wyatt offline, and we'll just have to figure out which attorney firm to have here, but that's a conversation that we could put on the agenda to discuss, right? But, yeah, but, you know, the district, the district, we can just have the attorney here if we wanted to, so I'll talk with them offline.
Okay, and then also, I wanted to check in, when will the district bring back the Framework for Excellence Plan, as well as to review the positions that will be needed maybe to move the district forward with that plan? I haven't heard anything about, since our last presentation.
I think that's on hold, I don't think we're doing anything with it, because we didn't get consensus from this board to move forward with it, and, I mean, we brought it in March, this board, this board did not give consensus for the Framework for Excellence, so.
Then what are our current goals, what are we working on?
Your guess is as good as mine, but, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, what I can say is this, if it's the desire of the board to bring it back, we can bring it back to revisit it.
I would like to have it be brought back, I don't know what my colleagues.
Well, we can still bring it back, but, Dr. Wyatt, you wanna chime in, what are your thoughts on that? Because that's, I mean, we could bring it back and present on it again.
I mean, either that, or I would like to know what is the district working on, what are our goals, what, I mean.
Had goals before, so the thing is that it's not, I think maybe because you're new at this, we've had goals before, so I know, and this would be with Anna Applegate, Ms. Applegate, so this is not where you just have a system and nobody's doing nothing. So I think you're kind of confused with that.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm not confused, I guess what I'm asking for is, I'm supposed to be doing a job here, and part of my job is accountability and to progress monitor what those goals are, so you're right, I don't know what those goal, I'm sorry, I, you're right, I don't know what those goals are, and I have been here for about a year and a half, and I still don't know what those goals are.
So they're the key performance indicators that we've had in the past, and so the district, like they're maneuvering, and I know the superintendent knows this too, the district is still working on those, so I guess we could get an update to find out.
I would recommend that we have those.
Those key performance indicators are not goals, though, I just want to be clear.
Well, no, they're looking at numbers, because she's looking at academic numbers, right?
I'm looking at goals for the district.
Right, with the academic numbers, yeah.
I just want to be clear, I, listen, I presented the goals to the board, I presented the goals to the district, the board decided not to go with those goals that were presented within the framework, so going forward, this board has to decide what those goals look like going forward. The key performance indicators are key performance indicators, those are not specifically goals.
They are goals.
No, well, no.
Well, they are goals.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you, I'm just gonna tell you that I know what a goal is, I've been doing it for 30 years.
Well, they're goals aligned with numbers, so that way we can make sure we're moving the district forward.
And folks, you know what, I'm gonna call time, because we are at about 10 minutes now, and that's way over the five minutes, so I'm just gonna say time, and we will move on with board comments. If we need to agendize items like that, we will, but we're over time.
Well, I would like to take my time back, I mean, I've been requesting.
I understand that, but you get five minutes for board comments.
Okay, well, if I had the answers to my questions before coming to the board, these are not new items on my agenda that I've been bringing up meeting after meeting, so.
Imagine we have them recorded then, meeting after meeting, but your five minutes is up, we're gonna move on with our next board member comments.
Well, I'm gonna make my next comment, so I would like to see that plan come back at some point, because I don't know what the goals of the district are at this point. Also, I want to, I would like to know when we will be presenting the board with the CAPS Extended Learning Report.
You said one question, that is more than one question, Ms. Sevales, I'm gonna ask you to stop and move on to the next board member, which would be Dr. Dowdy Rogers, thank you.
They were my comments for my.
I'm gonna say, I'm going to say this, we have not been consistent with the time, so I get it, I hear what you're trying to establish tonight, but our problem is, sometimes we establish it in the moment, so I, I don't think it's fair for me to just start making comments.
It's a full-blown discussion right now, it's not board, it is a board comment, it's not discussion.
And I'm definitely not gonna go back and forth, that's just not what I do.
Thank you.
But all I'm saying is that we've had people go over and over and whatever, I don't know, I wasn't watching the timer, and the timer's not even going, but clarity is clarity, so even clarity is to say, how do we give that information? Because what I wrote down is something that was said a long time ago, we were supposed to go back to the top 10, we were supposed to do these things, and that's why we get bottlenecked, because I don't know if that's coming back, so we could have had that, and we would have that documentation, and, and, and honestly, Ms. Sevales doesn't know about that. So we referred back to it and said, let's go back and put those protocols in place so that when you remember something, because I carry a book now to remember what I did request, so I can come back and just follow up for my own self, so I don't just sound like I'm just talking at every meeting and bringing up things because it's a hot topic that night. So that's what I'll say, but, again, Ms. Sevales was, was, I don't know, so we do need to just say, also, should they email it to you, because I know some people are trying that as well, but we just need to, you know, we just need to, to, to not be in the moment when it happens, and then we, we still don't get it done, so then we come back trying to finish it. So, the top 10 is what I'll start with in saying, because I felt that that's what would have cleared up some of it right there in the moment, to say that, and then establish how the board members are gonna give their information. But I do want to also, the same thing, I had wrote that as well, I am curious about, you know, what was brought to us as the goals and what we were doing, whether, whether it was a true rejection versus just a, we didn't say anything, really kind of like talked about it, and the community said we liked it and not liked it, and people have asked me as well, like, are you guys moving forward? Because quite a few people were at that meeting, and so I don't know where we are, but I think we were at going back and talking to some more people, right? We said we were gonna have another meeting, because we missed some stakeholders, and then we paused, and now we're on to a whole, something else. So we gotta be consistent there. I also want to bring up that I did visit, this was also the last meeting as well, San Bernardino Valley College, they have a marquee that has been broken since, it sounded like they told me the 70s, something went awry with their marquee, it doesn't light up, you know, and they really want that looked into, so I don't know if that's something that facilities need to get on there, but we talk about pride, and I really felt some pain in the conversation when they were talking to me about it, because they said they, you know, it was kind of feeling like they were overlooked, and it was a costly thing, but that, that's a mixed message, right? We'll come up and say we got millions of dollars, and then something like that doesn't get fixed, so please, please put that on the radar, because they really verbalized that to me. Didn't get a chance to also, even though we acknowledged that Jamie Rios was one of the nominees for Man of the Year, but he is actually Man of the Year, so we didn't get to mention that at the last meeting as well. The other thing that I had was siblings, and I know I've talked to some of you about this in the cabinet, and I don't know where we are in the policy, but if I had three kids, and two of them is going to one school, and they're all in elementary school, and two is going to one school, and then I have another one, and he has to go to another school, I don't understand that, so you gotta give us clarity on that, because, you know, that's a concern. We know, and I know we've heard, I've heard us talk about consistency on that, and I'm sure we probably had an overload, but we gotta fix that, you know, that's, that's, I can, I understand their pain. Let's see, community schools grants, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, I know you equipped me with some information, because it was asked, but I think the entire board, we need to understand, if there's some grant coming, I don't want people calling me and, and, you know, whatever, I want us to understand if, are we utilizing that money for, what is the purpose of it, has something to do with community schools, I remember I asked about community schools a long time ago, didn't really get clarity on it, it's a hundred and some thousand dollars, not a whole lot of money, but we do all need to be on the same wavelength, so no one feels that this person or that person is entitled to anything, and I don't even want to get into that. I also want to acknowledge Karen, who threw us off at the event last week, all of a sudden, we saw her in line, and she had her 25 years, so we want to, we want to give you a shout out, because you help us tremendously, and we appreciate you, and I was nervous, because I thought she was trying to say you were retiring, but then you corrected, and she said it was 25 years, so thank you for that. Shout out also to the Making Hope Happen Gala, Ginger and the team, and all, everybody involved, do a wonderful, wonderful job. Shout out to the, the entire Dr. Escavell, and however they did the Link Learning Tour that we wanted to showcase out to the world, they were so excited at going from a Pacific to a Royal, so that was great, I had a chance to, to be there with them at that, and it was wonderful. And then the Pacific Islanders Grant, it was absolutely amazing, and a shout out to everyone that was working with them in that work, because they did a fabulous job. And I think, I think I got in all of my comments, yeah. So thank you, everybody, and again, thank you for your prayers, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Dowdy Rogers, and we'll move on to Ms. Rosas Medina.
Oh, and I do apologize, the fact that, I'm just getting really frustrated, that inaccurate information being shared by board members, and acting as if it's the truth, because they believe they're all high and mighty, is, is really frustrating, and I'm getting tired of it, as well as inaccurate information, insinuations of inaccurate information. With that said, we saw board members spreading false information and blatantly lying with anger and conviction. If it hadn't been on the, if, if I hadn't been on the board, I would have believed them. I would have believed them because they sounded so, you know, and I've had people, Abigail, this is what, I can't believe you guys, I was like, what? So anyways, I'll leave it with that, and I will not repeat the misinformation and lies that was spread, but I will clarify what I can legally. Our superintendent did bring forth his resignation on his own and negotiated his terms.
Hold on, hold, hold, hold.
No, no, I'm not.
You can't talk about that, no, hold on, stop.
No, no, that's all I'm talking about, that's all I'm saying, that is, all I'm saying, I'm just saying.
You're gonna get real, you're really border, right, you're getting borderline Brown Act violation right there, so I'm gonna stop you.
Retiring, retiring.
But, but, Dr. Flores, that information shouldn't have been, probably, she just talked about negotiation, she cannot say that.
So the reason why.
She didn't use the word.
So then regards to what was said at the last board meeting, with regards to Ms. Sevales' comments, so I guess I will go ahead and make sure that it was, see, the thing is that, this is my frustration, where I'm not trying to talk negative, and, you know, when it comes to the board, I mean, with the superintendent, but the reality is, we have a board member that is saying things that they shouldn't be saying, that is blatantly lying, that's my concern, is how they're bringing information to the board and to the public, and then we have public comments that come up and saying things that are not true, and that's what's frustrating, is that they're saying things that are not true, but because they hear people like Ms. Sevales speaking and acting as if it is, and they say it with such conviction, and I'm frustrated with that, because then I'll have people, Abigail, what is going on with her? I don't know, I know she's frustrated, but that's my problem, is that the fact that, you know, we can't allow anyone, and even with this thing, how she was mentioning, inaccurate information is not responsible, insinuations is not okay either. So I'm just really frustrated with it, and, and I think we should look back at what, when it comes to the agreements that we come up with, and, and things that are being said, and things that shouldn't be said, and that's what I wanted to mention.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina, I will make a brief comment about that, that I did consult with legal counsel for comments that were made by board members that night, and I actually asked two opinions, and there were no violations of Brown Act by any board member that evening. Okay, so I want to make sure that's clear, there's clarification there, you know, there may be things that's said that we may not agree with, however, there were no Brown Act violations that occurred that evening, and that came from two different legal counsels, so I want to clarify that.
Yeah, and I'm glad you did, but I was referring to the information that was said that was not accurate.
And I understand it as well, I just want to make sure that the folks out there knew that there were no Brown Act violations. All right, Dr. Flores.
Board, I am bringing a very, and cabinet and Mr. Irvin, a very important concern, and it's based on our Friday update of the Sierra High School Wellness Center, Health and Wellness Center, and I was out of town, I had to go to a funeral, and I just got back really late Sunday, so I took it upon myself to go to Sierra to have a tour of the health, and it's a superb, absolutely superb center, I brought us. I brought us brochures for all of us, so you could see. And I also, Mr. Murieta didn't know that I was coming. I didn't want him to, you know, I just wanted to pop in. I know him very well. It has, it's an award-winning health, everybody comes to see us, Pomona, Rialto, from all over, all over the Inland Empire. And I read with, with a lot of trepidation. I believe we need to put on hold any dismantling of it, because it didn't look like it was out of code, because I asked specific questions. Have you ever had violations, not to their knowledge? Have you had fire marshals out here? Yes. They pass codes in fire marshals. They were very innovative. There's all kinds of procedures and structural approvals that were made already for their EverBlock fireproof modular system that they have. And so my concern is the services that they've given to our kids. This was in 2016 that all of this was approved. And I, I would like us to put a hold on it, because per the Friday update, you know, we're supposed to start dismantling June 3rd. That would be such a disservice to our kids and our community, and to the teachers, to the counselors, to all our Inland Empire partners, who volunteer their time for our kids. Here are the health services they provide, based on their survey. So I'll give you this. And I have, I have 10. I brought, I think I brought for everybody. Yeah, you can give them that too. I have 10, you can pass it on. And I just, you know, they have a turnaround service, health, health for dental, for, you know, physicals, for eyes. I mean, it's just like a wraparound. And it's the epitome of excellence, of what you say, Mr. Irvin. It is the epitome of excellence. And I, for one, do not want us to tear it down at all. So I would like to ask that respectfully, that we put a hold on that until, you know, I want to see, I actually want to see the approvals, because they exist. And, you know, if it's a wall that's not up to code, then anchor it, you know? What would it take to anchor it? I mean, you know, I'm not a carpenter, but I know about carpentry. So I just beseech you, all right? Secondly, secondly, I want to share that, you know, I don't know if you remember, I was appointed by Superintendent Thurman to be co-chair of the Literacy by Literacy Initiative Task Force. We met on Monday. And he, he announced that on this Friday, I don't know if you know this, Ms. Applegate, but I think all 1,000 districts are invited to participate on the reading by third grade initiative. And are you going to be on there? Will you guys be on, on the call? You will be, okay. So it's a big deal. And he also reported, there's lots of funding coming down the pike. Multilingual libraries, I hope that we apply for grants for multilingual libraries, for literacy coaches. There's Boku money coming down from the May revise, and lots of other ones. And next, I just wanted to mention that somebody member, Medina, asked me to come and, okay, and present at the Higher Ed Committee on, I'm almost done, on ethnic studies. And I was able to share our policy. So everyone, it was recorded, publicly recorded, our policy. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And Mr. Saul, I know you and I were making eye contact on Ms. Flores' concern. I don't know if you wanted to update, because I have an update, but I imagine yours is better than mine.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President, Dr. Wyatt. So just an update, the facilities team is working on a solution where they can put more permanent walls and engage in that over the summer, so that it is ready for when students return. So dismantling would apply to the walls, not the specific wellness center. The plan has always been to continue to keep that space to provide those services to students. However, it's important that we do provide a more structurally sound wall, you know, and I won't go into too much detail, but we have walls that go right in the middle of an air register. That is not compliant. That is not to DSA code. And because we have students in that space, we have to correct the situation.
And my understanding is they're getting a new room, an even better room, that's modernized, and I guess also closer to the office and entrance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But I understand that, why was it that they passed all the other codes ahead before?
I'm not aware that they've passed DSA code. I do not believe that that was a project that went through the Department of State Architecture, which, since we are a school facility.
Well, the blueprints were approved by our district.
The blueprints?
Yes.
So I'd have to go back to look at the blueprints being approved by our district, but our district is not the final authority in school construction.
I understand that. I understand about DSA. But I, but they've been in existence since 2016, and that's six years. So why, all of a sudden, you have to dismantle them? And I want to know if those walls will be up by the time school starts?
Oh.
Or are they down the list?
And Harold, I just wanted to get clarification, not a, I apologize, not a whole discussion, but.
Well, I'm sorry about that. But I'm very upset, because 100, they have 500 kids, and 128 kids use those facilities on a weekly basis. And if they don't have any place to go.
Dr. Flores, thank you.
Yeah, I'm upset.
Thank you very much. No, and I get it. That's why I wanted to get an update, because there's a good plan in place, and services, I've been told, will not stop. Alrighty, and I will be brief as well. Excuse me, I want to get to my notes. I don't want to get started yet, because I have a lot. All right, I'll start with, first of all, thank you to our classified staff. We've already heard that enough times. Dr. Flores, can I do my board comments, please? Thank you. To our classified staff, we appreciate everything you've done. I saw all of our classified staff helping out, along with our students at the Making Hope Happen Gala. Of course, our 70 music workshop was there, providing entertainment, along with our amazing Aurora Valley School art program, hosted a number of different displays. So a lot of great things happening there. I know Dr. Daddy Rogers was with me at Cajon for the Special at Olympics, which was a phenomenal success, Dr. Menares, to you and your team. I've been to it before, and this had all high schools involved, so great job on that. It exploded, so I love it. Pacific Under graduation, thank you again to Francine Blackshear and the rest of our team, putting together an exciting event filled with cultural traditions. San Andreas Grow Your Own Program, their scholarship, so award ceremony, I had a chance to stop there. Great to see their program, and many of our students getting scholarships, I believe over 20. And that was at San Andreas High School, which is one of our continuation schools. We already heard earlier, congratulations to Cajon Track Team for taking second place in the D1 CIF Southern Section Finals. Another congratulations to our Cajon Ladies Softball Team for making to CIF D5 Finals this weekend in Irvine. Good luck, and hopefully bring home that championship to San Bernardino. Congratulations to our Royal Valley High School Swim Team for making it to the championship day for the first time. A special congratulations to Donna Fano Costa, making it to the finals and being the Suncus League MVP. Royal Valley High School had five swimmers making to CIF Finals, and that was for the first time, and that was from Santa Barbara to Palm Desert. If you don't know, Southern Section is huge, so great job to them. We already heard a lot about Seth Johnson, so I'm not going to talk too much about him. Ken Hubbs Award winner. I don't know if we heard about Miranda Owen, though, who was the Keith Hubbs athlete. And I think Dr. Rodriguez and Mr. Irvin will talk a little bit more about that, so I'll let them talk about that. As well as our San G baseball team for making to the quarterfinals, finishing their season in second place in Andreas League. And finally, I want to give a shout out to our, congratulations to all of our graduates. You survived a very challenging year. You made it, and we're all proud of you. I can't wait to see you and congratulate many of you at your graduation ceremonies. That was supposed to be all my comments, but I'm continuing, I have a little bit more time. I do agree with Dr. Dottie Rogers and Ms. Sevales and all of you, we need to get that top 10 back. We've talked about it too long, too many times. So, you know, I'll just be very blunt, we shouldn't have to say it that many times to get it agendized. So we need to get that agendized, so we can establish the top 10 that we want to get done. We have heard so many items that are on a list today, that have been on a list or needed to be on a list, that have not been addressed, you know, for quite some time. And I truly believe that the top 10 gave us a barometer to watch and monitor, and as we got those things done, we checked them off the list. We created another, say, number nine, number eight, number 10. Checked them off the list, we moved forward. Okay, so we've asked for that many times, many times, and probably for about a year, maybe longer. I don't even know how long it's been, because time's been flying. So I'm asking, with consensus, if we could agendize that, so we could start working on establishing the new top 10. Not the old top 10, the new top 10. And I'll look across and I'll move, starting with Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Yes, and that also would include future agenda items, because we used to didn't have future agenda items, but we did talk about that in our last protocol meeting. So there's top 10, because it's priority items, but then there's future agenda. So as long as that's the one and the same.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
I would suggest, yeah, but to bring back, so at least you can get some clarity for those that, you know, haven't seen it.
No, and I definitely want Ms. Sevales to see that.
Yeah, just so they can see what it looks like.
Because that will help her out tremendously, as well as us, because it was a great way to monitor, and that's why I'm just asking right now. Dr. Flores? I say yes, Ms. Sevales? Yeah. So, and I do apologize, Ms. Sevales, for cutting you off, because that one wasn't right. But I want to try to, try to stick to our time. We haven't done a great job of that, but we need to start somewhere. I think when you see the top 10 and then future agenda items, it is on every board agenda. It never stops. It's always in writing, because, you know, you've asked for that, and it'll always be in writing. It's always going to be there. And I don't think I can emphasize enough how much we need to see this on the next board agenda. Okay, because we've been asking for it for a long time. And one of the issues we're having is communication. We're not seeing it, and so we don't have something to be accountable for, saying things are getting done or not done. So I appreciate you all agreeing to that. I expect to see it on the next agenda, so we can have a discussion, perhaps a worksheet like we had before, which listed our top 10 items in, or top 15, and then we go from there. Thank you. Action items, nine point, oh, wait, I'm sorry, 8.2 superintendent staff, sorry. Mr. Irvin?
Yeah. All right, a couple of things. The Classified Appreciation Week, again, want to make sure that this week, we know we're celebrating the members of the SBCUSD family, and that's going to be very important, and because we know our classified employees, they're the backbone of our district, and we really appreciate their commitment to this work. They've done a lot of good work. Secondly, Dr. Robert Redfield, he's a former director of the CDC. He had a chance to visit with some of our scholars today, and for our career pathways at Cajon, Pacific, San Gregorio, and Sierra High School. Very important. And we had about 100 students there today. And our partner, AMLC, they really played a role in that, so it was exciting. And before I turn it over, some of my time to Dr. Menares, yeah, no, I'm going to turn it over to her, but I wanted to say that, there was a quick question, really quickly, I know, Ms. Sevales, you asked me, asked us toward the end there about the, oh, yeah, there you go, there you go, the CAPS Extended Learning Report. That's going to be coming forward on the June 7th board meeting. And then that will be a presentation. And then anything that's outside of that will be done in closed session. And so that is going to be expectation that our board members do attend that. And so that will be coming June 7th. And I just want to make that very clear, so there's no misunderstanding on that report. And then I believe I'm turning it over, I want to say this about Dr. Menares. So I want to yield the rest of my time to Dr. Menares, because as you know, she'll be leaving our district soon. And I think she would like to share some parting words, which was important. But before she does, I want to, first of all, thank her for her leadership. From day one, when I came on board, she's been a very strong partner. She worked with me right from the beginning, when I was announced. And she was a strong partner. And she really worked with me to tackle this work on behalf of the students in this district, right? She was there every step of the way, and I really appreciated that. She's always shown, you know, heart for kids. She believes, she has a heart for equity, that's for sure. That is definitely for sure. And then she loves the kids. She loves the students here in this district. She loves this staff. She's going to be outstanding superintendent. Every deputy superintendent that has worked under my leadership actually has become a superintendent. So I'm 3-0, so every single one. And so, but I will say this, though, that I talk about actions, attitude, behaviors, and beliefs, and I will say that Dr. Menares reflects that. Her actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief reflects her commitment to do the right thing for kids always. Even though her and I have had our disagreements, we always came back and say, what is in the best interest of kids? And I think that is something that I've always prided myself on, and I do appreciate Dr. Menares for that. Even in our late evening conversations, in the morning, whenever we had conversations, even though we agreed to disagree at times, we always talked about, okay, in the end, how is this in the best interest of kids? And we stuck to that. And I think that's why her leadership will shine. And, you know, we've had some challenges here, and I won't go into that, because we all know that. But I do think that when we talk about the highest level of excellence, I think she reflects that. When I talk about high expectations, she strives to have high expectations for all students, even through the turmoil that we've had this year at times. She is an ambassador for education. She does believe that this is, we got to do what's right for kids. And she does try to make decisions good for kids. And again, I want to say that her actions, attitude, behaviors, and belief reflects her commitment to do the right thing. And with that, I yield my time to her, and you can start it over. Karen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Irvin. But before we do that, I actually want to yield my time to Dr. Rodriguez. She's going to celebrate some of our scholars, our athlete scholars, I believe, right?
Yes, we'll be very quick. The Ken Hubbs Foundation issues awards in the memory of Ken Hubbs, who was a four-sport standout athlete at Colton High School in the 1950s. He pursued a pro baseball career and was chosen the National League Rookie of the Year when he played for the Chicago Cubs. In his memory, the foundation was established, and it honors high school athletes since 1964. Congratulations to Scott Johnson, overall Ken Hubbs Foundation Athlete of the Year from Cajon High School. Seth competes in track and field, is an exceptional scholar-athlete. He will attend the University of California at Berkeley. He has a 4.5 GPA. Dr. Tanya Bishop is his principal. Congratulations to Miranda Owen. She is the Keith Hubbs Athlete of the Year from Pacific High School. This award is given to the student-athlete that possesses the following qualities: inspirational service, dependability, loyalty, trustworthiness, perseverance, and determination. This young lady has beat the odds. She competes in tennis, basketball, and track. She is this year's valedictorian at Pacific High School. This extraordinary young woman has perfect attendance. She plans to attend Cal State San Bernardino in the fall. The proud principal of Pacific High School is Dr. Natalie Raimundo. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. That's why we do what we do, right? So, Mr. Irvin, first of all, thank you for giving me some of your time to speak this evening. I appreciate your continuous urgency for doing what is best for the children we serve, and the faith you had in me and appointing me as your deputy superintendent. I am very proud of what we've been able to accomplish in a short amount of time, although it's not always something everybody can see. It's kind of that infrastructure in a house. It's all hidden, but there has been a lot of work this year. So I had to write it all down, so I didn't get emotional. So I'm just going to keep reading. As you may or may not know, community and those watching, and of course, our board sitting here, and my cabinet that I've worked with for many years, I am heading to Worcester, Massachusetts. My daughter lives out there. And so tonight is actually my last regularly scheduled board meeting for this great school district. It is a bittersweet moment for me, because although I'm very happy to have this opportunity to serve as a superintendent in the new district that will be my home, I am heartbreaking, heartbroken to leave SBCUSD. Tonight, I want to thank the board members who really opened your arms and you welcomed me almost six years ago into this great community. You continue to challenge me to serve our community and our scholars. You helped me to grow as a You helped me to grow as a leader and I know that the lessons I've learned here will guide me and help me make the best difference for the youth that I'm about to serve in the future. So, thank you so much. For the SBCUSD family, you know, and so that's our district staff, everybody in the district office and all of our support offices, our school sites, all the fabulous employees and team members. I'm going to miss all of you greatly. Your warm smiles, darn it, your warm smiles, kind spirits, and continuous commitment to the children and community just have really touched me over the years. I encourage you to continue to work together, persevere, and strive for excellence because our children deserve nothing less. You are capable of bringing out the best in our brilliant scholars. Don't ever forget that. To the families and community, including our parent leadership councils, our community partners, and all who work to help make hope happen in SBCUSD, it has truly been my greatest pleasure to serve with you. And I can only hope that I get to serve with people like you in Massachusetts. The amount of dedication, pride, and love you have for the district has truly been palpable through the years. And you have made me a better human. So, mil gracias. Finally, to the phenomenal scholars in SBCUSD. You inspire me and you give me hope for the future. While visiting your classrooms and chatting with you in the hallways, I was just able to watch your brilliant shine. I'm in awe of your civic engagement, tenacity, and love of life and learning. Just listening to our Slack scholars tonight and our athlete, athlete scholars, it's just, it just gives such hope for the future. I want to give a special shout out to San Bernardino High School ASB, who welcomed me in and really pushed my thinking. And then, of course, my Steven over at Del Vallejo Leadership Middle School. He's just a really special young man. And so, thank you, all of you, all those scholars out there for filling my bucket just by being you. And so, I'm going to close my comments this evening and leave you with some words that, that impacted me many decades ago when I was a young teacher. Not that I'm old now, but, and I hope they will always be an inspiration to you. And so, it's a quote, it's my favorite. Excellence can be obtained if you care more than others think is wise, risk more than others think is safe, dream more than others think is practical, and expect more than others think is possible. So, keep caring, risking, dreaming, and expecting because our children deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menares. And do I have any board members maybe that wanted to say comments to Dr. Menares? I think that would be appropriate. Ms. Resals Medina, Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Okay, she put her right on properly.
Right to left this time.
Yeah, I, I do, you know, breaking up is so hard to do. But I will say, and I, I've shared my sentiments with Dr. Menares. But Dr. Menares, you have definitely been a jewel to, to not only just our school district, but to our community. That was one thing that was really stood out when you first got here. You were ready to go out and meet, greet, and do whatever it is you could do to make sure that the community knew that they had someone that maybe didn't grow up here and wasn't a cardinal and all that. But you wanted to, to meet others and learn them. And there, and I can say without a shadow of a doubt, there was never a time that I came to you or gave you something and you didn't come back with a resolve one way or the other. There's no, nothing left on the books. And that, that is, you know, admirable to me because you guys, I'm in awe often of all that you have to do. And then you have seven board members that gets all types of things going. But with grace and with dignity, you always would just, I got it, you know, and I don't have to follow up. And so, I appreciate you. I wish you well. I totally can only imagine, like, you know, when my son moved to Utah, I was like, okay. And my husband was like, you can't go. But, you know, you've come full circle to be able to do that and now be there with your daughter and what she has and what she's doing. Thank you for the book and God bless you. And I'll be, I don't know, watching you via social media or something with good news, okay? All right, take care and thank you for your service.
I just wanted to say, you know, I, I said it before and I think many of us know, a student who graduates in our district will be doing great things. You know, they're going to, there's nothing that they cannot accomplish. Our teachers who come through our school district will do great things. And as well, assistant superintendents and you will take great things and challenges as well and kind of maneuver. These are learning lessons that I know you will do amazing. I know I was, in the beginning as well, very supportive. And you, you always brought great insight, was very calm, especially in moments where it felt like there was chaos going on. You still contained and, and kept your composure and really insight. So, I do appreciate you on that. I wish you the best. And I know you're going closer to family. And thank you for sharing your daughter's new book. I have seen The Bluest Blue. I'm by Natalie Cruz. So, if you haven't seen it, try to get it. I'm doing a little promo. But it's, this is great because it, it just shows how dedicated and how a wonderful mom that you are for your daughter to be doing this and the great things you're going to do as a superintendent. So, congratulations on your position.
Dr. Menares, want to thank you for all your service and all the different positions that you embraced. It was always a challenge, but you always rose to the occasion. And you went through lots of rough times, but you persevered and you served with dignity and grace. And I wish you the best. And there's nothing like being that close to your daughter because I have a daughter and I know that how important that is to be close to family. And, you know, Massachusetts, it's cold, but, but I know that they will love you. And I just wish you the best, so.
So, I'm going to start bawling up here. I first met Dr. Menares as a parent many, many, many years ago, I think, when she had first recently started with the district and the FLI was having their first group, parent graduation. I was part of that cohort and I remember her being there. And just ever since then, you know, once you became the director over special education, you know, knowing that, you know, my process through the whole SPED, you know, process with my son, it was just really a breath of fresh air to have you there because, like it's been mentioned, you know, your calmness, your not only expertise that you brought, but really your humanness, right? You understood and you understand that we are people first. And you always, always, always made yourself available to listen to us, whether it was students or parents or staff. And, you know, that, my experience with the district as a parent had always been very contentious. It was a very distrusting relationship that I had had with the district, staff and personnel in schools. And, you know, having met you really helped me begin to heal and bridge that connection. And I began to understand, you know, that there are people, I hadn't met them yet sadly. But, but I realized that there were people, like the young man said earlier, that care about, you know, us and the community and the students. And so, I just really, really appreciate you. And like I've told you many, many times before, you know, I selfishly wanted to keep you here. I, I think that the district is losing a great, great individual. And I just wish you nothing but the best. And I am so going to miss you. Now, I'm going to be sitting in the middle of two empty, empty seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abios. And I don't know about the empty seats around you then, maybe, no, I'm just kidding. No, I'm playing with her. Dr. Menares, just, as I've said before, congratulations. So proud of you and excited for you as well and your family. Very thankful for you as well. I think we came on almost about the same time. And just your ability to work with this board, number one. You've always, as Dr. Daddy Rogers said, you've always done it with poise and dignity, professionalism, and patience, which is very hard to have with this board. Trust me when I say that. I know more now than ever, right? And, but again, you've always just had a smile on your face, had a positive attitude, very professional attitude in that we'll get it done, right? And that's, at the end of the day, what are we here for? We're here to get it done and done for our students and done well. And then we had a little conversation. You're joking me saying, you know, what's this California lady going to bring out to Massachusetts? Well, I think they're going to be pretty impressed with what you bring to Massachusetts. Cutting-edge education, CTE tech at the highest, special ed. You did an amazing job with our special ed department. I know that was one of my biggest concerns as a parent, as Ms. Abios said, and definitely as a board member. We made that a point. And gosh darn, it's heading in the right direction. The CAC is on fire. You guys did an amazing job at the ADR conference presenting. And when we look at the reduction litigation and filings, it's, it's amazing. It's just short, absolutely amazing. You know, I share that often, our accomplishments here with our SPED to many of my colleagues at many SLPAs. And that is all due to your leadership. So, Massachusetts, what are you getting? You're getting a gem. You're getting somebody that loves kids, number one. That is relentless in her effort to make sure that we create systems of excellence, but also comes with a huge heart too. Which at the end of the day, I think that is probably one of our greatest characteristics as educators, is our passion and love for children and for their learning and for keeping them safe. So, I will miss you tremendously. And unlike many on here, I'm, I'm very selfish to say I wish you weren't going. But I am happy for you and your family and super excited for your future. And like I said, in Massachusetts, you're very lucky for who you're getting. So, thank you. All right, before I get emotional, nine point O action items, let's move back on to business. Nine point one, approval personnel report number 20 dated May 17th, 2022, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
I'm moved.
Wait, wait.
As amended.
As amended. All right, I think we had a.
I'm moved.
Ms. Resals Medina, second, anybody?
Is your second?
I don't know.
Second.
Were you both at the same time? Sorry. Okay, second by Dr. Daddy Rogers, in discussion. Let's vote. Okay, motion carries. Nine point two, resolution of district emergency, Cajon High School Business Services. All right, let me read this one, I think, right? Do I need to read this one, Karen? Okay, well, there's four be it resolved, so. Okay, well, here we go then.
I'm moved.
Okay, so moved. Moved it properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, motion carries. Sorry, that was faster than I am, which is not hard to do. All right, nine point three, transitional kindergarten instructional materials adoption, $231,987 and 50 cents.
I'm moved, second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Dr. Flores and second by Ms. Resals Medina?
Yes.
All righty, there we go. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to nine point four, approval of the 2022-2023 Board of Education Meeting Calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on the calendar? If we're looking at it, I think maybe we should real quick, yes? Dr. Flores?
I was wondering, did you guys notice on July 5th, it's after a holiday? Is that, can we, can we move it to, I mean, I'm just asking. It's really, I think, difficult.
We have a lot of those. We actually have four.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just asking, was, I know that everybody agrees on it or? Can we, do we have to negotiate it?
Board meetings though?
Oh, this is just the board meeting calendar. So, it's just among ourselves, correct? Okay, so, I would propose, I don't know if my board members agree with me, that we should move it to the following week and then skip the next week and then just for July. But then that would put us, you know, in August coming like a week. I already looked at this in.
Well, August, we have a two week gap.
Are you saying not make it the 12th though?
Not make it the 5th.
No, I'm saying, so, because when you talked about August, you're saying move the 5th to the 12th, right?
Right.
And then just August is, yeah.
I support that. I support that. What?
So, there's a lot of things we have to approve, right, in July? Cabinet? Is it? I don't know. I, I want to ask Cabinet, do, do we skip July 5th and just go to the middle of July or?
I'm looking like July 12th, 26th, and August 9th and 23rd.
Yeah.
Because we have a three-week break from the 16th to the 6th.
Right.
And if we, if we move it 12th, 26th, and then 9th and 23, then we have a two-week break to the 6th and then a two-week break to the 20th and we're back on regular schedule. So, I, this is my recommendation. I would say July 12th and 26th, then August 9th and 23rd, and then leave the calendar to rest.
August 9th and 23rd, yes.
Yep, and then we have a two-week break as normal from the 30th to the 6th.
Okay.
But, because then we run into the 6th again and we run into February, we run into January. We've got a lot of three-day holidays, but.
Say that again, Dr. Wyatt.
So, it would be July 12th and 26th.
Right.
So, we'd move those basically down, you know, each one of those down a week. And then in August, we'd go to the 9th and 23rd. So, we'd move the 2nd and 16th to the 9th and 23rd. And then we'd remain the calendar, keep the calendar as it is. And we'd only have a normal two-week break between the 23rd and 6th and we'd be back on normal calendar. Now, the only thing I have that might be a consideration is beginning of the year.
That would be good for the cabinet not to have a board meeting the first week of August.
Right, but I don't, I don't see why, why do we jump over into, to deal with August? July is more of the problem. I'd rather almost a back-to-back versus, because I don't know, that throws off, you know how people have reoccurring, you're, you're.
I'm just worried about beginning of the year.
Yeah, that's two months of reoccurring adjustment. So, you, you're going to have to look at your calendar. I'm just saying, if we do it, because if we do, we're going to throw off two months of what's reoccurring on our calendars. And I could, I don't even know.
I don't either. I mean, I've deferred to executive cabinet. Or we just get rid of the 5th. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but.
I mean, that's an option.
Everybody around here happy.
We've had it where, a month where we've only had one board meeting, that one month.
I'll be honest, I don't know the rules on that, so I don't want to recommend something we can't do, Harold. He's nodding his head like, look at me, Scott, so.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, Karen.
We used to only have one meeting in July.
Last time they added it.
And last board meeting, last year, Mr. Tillman asked to add two and we put it back in. So, that's why I put two this time. But we've only ever used to have one and it was always the week after 4th of July.
On the 12th.
Okay, so let's do it on the 12th.
Harold, no, Harold, Harold wants to speak.
I was just going to add, there's, there's no requirement of the number of board meetings.
Oh, okay.
You just need to schedule meetings in order, enough in order to get the district business done.
Oh, thank you.
We went back to that last time and I think we're, appeared, but I mean, if we could take it off, I'm, I'm all for that vote.
Right, I, I would agree then just the 12th. Do you guys want to just have the 12th? Would that work? Would that work? Okay, let's just do the 12th.
Harold? I was just going to add one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I think that's a wise decision because much of the time, that's the only time staff have a time to get away for a holiday or a vacation. And so, in order to create content and items for that, it makes it very difficult.
Right, and you'll just be ending summer school. You guys are going to need a break. Yeah, okay.
All right, well, we had a discussion.
So, can I ask, can I ask a question?
The calendar's been amended, we have to amend, right?
So, is the 12th okay, or the 19th? What do you prefer?
I'd say keep it the 19th. I mean, that's what we have, right? Anybody?
Cabinet, asking you guys.
Thumbs up.
I don't know which one you're nodding your head for.
No, they all have different perspectives.
19th?
The 19th? Okay.
All right, so do we have to-
Okay, let's eliminate the 5th and just keep the 19th.
Well, we had a motion. Do we have to?
I move that we amend the calendar to eliminate the 5th and just meet on the 19th.
I second it.
And then keep everything else the same. Okay.
All right, so there is an amended motion to amend the calendar by Dr. Flores, and seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina, to remove the 5th of July and keep the rest of the calendar the same. Correct?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you. Good discussion. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong screen. I'm looking at my calendar. There we go. If anybody else is doing that. All right, motion carries. Let's move on to 10.0, Consent Items. 10.1, Approval of Consent Items.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion, any items to be pulled? All right, that is very good news. So, we have a motion. It's been seconded. There's been discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. You guys, we might make it. That was a big one, too. All right, motion carried. Thank you, Karen. All right, we're on to 11.0, Review of Board Requests. 11.1, Staff Will Review Items, Updates Requested. Ms. Ontoberos.
Good evening. So, the first request that I recorded this evening came from, came out of public comment when Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would request, she was requesting information about financial literacy programs that are offered in our schools, actually came out of the presentation with the students, requesting information about financial literacy programs that are offered in our schools, including plans to add it to our curriculum. Then during public comment, there was a request to share information about the Basketball Clinic at Indian Springs High School with our athletic directors, and I think that Dr. Rodriguez actually did that during the meeting, so we could probably check that one off, but we'll continue to help them promote that as well. Mr. Irvin responded to an issue that was brought forth in public comment, noting that we would investigate the report by our parent who witnessed some student truancy and other issues at one of our high schools. The, then, Ms. Myra Sabios asked for an update on several policy issues, most of which were answered during the meeting. So, you asked about the Facility Use Committee and, or a policy, and it was reported that we'd be bringing that one back on June 7th, so I'm going to mark that as done in terms of the answer to the question. Ms. Myra Sabios then asked about the A to G policy, and Dr. Esquivel noted that it would be going to the committee in early June. Ms. Myra Sabios, you asked then about the reestablishing and, or considering a policy for establishing an end time for meetings. That one I'll leave undone. Ms. Myra Sabios, you then asked about the policy regarding the translation turnaround for IEPs and psychological reports, and Dr. Rodriguez noted that a sample had been reviewed or received, and that that would next go to committee for review. Ms. Sabios, you asked for, again, reminded everybody of your request to have an attorney present at our meetings, and then asked for an update on the status of the Framework for Excellence or the goals for the district, and I believe that that was echoed by Dr. Rogers. Ms. Sabios, you asked about then what, when we would be seeing the report for the CAPS Extended Learning Contract Report, and Mr. Irvin noted that that would be coming back on June 7th as well. There was a request by Dr. Rogers that was echoed by all members of the board to have the return of the published top 10 list, as well as future addenda items. Dr. Rogers asked that we would look into repairing the marquee, and I believe you meant at San Bernardino High School.
Yes, I did. Did I say San Bernardino Valley College?
Yes.
That's what they, okay. San Bernardino High School.
You did, yeah. Okay, so then, Dr. Rogers, you asked also about what is the practice for siblings who may not be able, may not be able to attend the same schools, and so you're looking for an answer with that information, as well as to what was proposed in the Community Schools Grant that was just awarded to San Bernardino City Unified. Dr. Flores noted that Tony Thurman had invited us to participate in the Reading by Third Grade Initiative meeting on Friday, and encouraged us to attend, and then asked that we would be looking for some of the new sources of money that are coming from the state and apply for grants, especially for multilingual libraries, and I think you said instructional coaches, but I know that-
Literacy coaches.
Literacy coaches. So, thank you very much, yes. And those were all the requests that I did capture.
Thank you, Ms. Ontoberos, and we will move on to 12.0, Closing. 12.1, Adfirmment.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening, and we made it before 10. Not too bad.